He said he never got the notice of the meeting, so I'm gonna. Um, what's it called? I know, but what's the?
Zoom?
Yeah, what's the, is this the new program that we're using to get it out?
Oh, TownCloud.
TownCloud. Yes, it's. Yes, you did, you do, you did, but I'm, just wanna put. Yeah. Yeah. I know, I'm just, that's why I wanted to respond. He said, are we having one tonight? Yes. Jody also. Okay. Um, let's go ahead and get, get the public hearing started because I think we can give Wayne just a quick minute to explain what we're hearing comment on. So the first is the proposed change to the city code title 10-2-1, definitions, amending the definition of finished and natural grade. So if, would you just like to give a very quick explanation so that anybody that wants to comment?
These are proposed changes that pertain to the building, the new building height ordinance. They would be, they're definitions that are crafted for wording that's in the building height definition. So they would go into the, into the definition part of the code as well as would be referenced right under the building height definition so people can see exactly those, when those, when those words are used in the building height definition, right below that will be their, their, the, what those, what those words mean and how they're to be incorporated from reading the building height ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Jody, do you have any requests online from people with their hands raised? That would like to speak in the public hearing? If, if you're in attendance by Zoom and you would like to make a statement, be heard, we would like you to raise your hand in the Zoom fashion by clicking on the option. Bob, you're magical. You're here and there.
I'm ubiquitous.
All right, hearing no comments. We will move on and, um, just as by way of information for anybody that is maybe watching this later, there is, there are no members of the public in attendance here in the building, so that's why I'm not giving them an opportunity to speak because they're, they aren't here. Number two is, we're going to hear comments on changing city code title 10-2-1 definitions, proposal to add a definition for finished grade points and natural grade reference line. And this is basically the same thing, Wayne, yes? Okay. So any, if anyone'd like to make a comment on that, please raise your Zoom hand. Okay, seeing no comments or hearing none, we will move on to number three, the third thing in the public hearing. The proposed change to city code title 10-11-8B, parentheses, five, sports courts. Wayne, would you like to just give us a quick, brief explanation, explanation on that one?
Right now, the sport courts follow the setbacks of a regular home, a yard setback or home. We're, we're suggesting that they take on the setbacks of accessory building rather than the home. And allow them to be closer to the, to the property line, but still follow the setback of the accessory building rather than a regular home on the lot.
All right, any comments on that? Hearing no comments on the proposed changes to the sport court portion of our city code. We will close the public hearing and move on to our council work session. We, it is Tuesday, July 13th, 2021. We are gonna hold a work session for the city of Woodland Hills. Council member David Pratt is out of town and excused, and council member MacArthur is on his way. We have an attendance at this point, Baba Ottley and Doral Kinniston and Carrie Malkovich. And I am Mayor Wendy Prey. So the first item on this agenda is to discuss the proposed changes to city code title, title 10-2-1. Now, before we talk about this, I just wanna point out that we are, these number one, two, and three things that we just heard on the, from the public hearing, we're not, they're not on our agenda to take action tonight. We, I just put there on the work session for you to discuss them if you have any questions or comments, things before we, hopefully, we'll be able to take action next, next meeting. So is there anything that you want to discuss about these definitions for finished grade and natural grade?
Just wanna read it out loud, can we?
Sure. Doral is your, yes, Doral, would you like to read it?
Finished grade points, elevation points adjoining the structure after final grading. Natural grade reference line. Reference line created from the highest point of the natural grade on the perimeter of the building to the lowest point on the perimeter of the building, which is projected throughout the entire footprint of the structure. I'd have to read that about five times to understand it. Help me, Wayne.
That description, that, that line, I mean, that drawing you gave us, and then I'm thinking, okay, where does this?
Highest point of the natural grade. The, the, the natural grade, the elevation of the undisturbed and natural surface of the ground prior to any excavation or fill. That's one of the problems we had with our old code. It wasn't clearly defined where that measurement is taken from, or what it, what it was actually. So that's to defining what the natural grade is. The elevation at the undisturbed natural surface of the ground before any excavation or fill. Now, the finished grade is, this is wording that's incorporated into the building height definition. But our current finished grade definition is only measured at the front of the structure. And, um, we need to create a plane, so we need to have two points to use for reference purposes. And same with the highest and the lowest, wherever those are around the structure. And that plane would be created, and that would be taken throughout the structure then in, if that is the plane that's used to determine the building height. Remember, we have one or two planes, the finished grade or the natural grade. So this defines what that finished grade is in our definition, so that's actually being, that would, that would be changed. The natural grade elevation, we, um, we refer to this as a natural grade reference line. And that's again, these two points created from the highest point of the natural grade around the perimeter of the building to the lowest point. And that plane, whatever that plane is, is carried throughout the structure. And if that's the used, then the building height is measured down to that point. And if you remember, it's the lowest point, whether it's a natural grade or finished grade, that's where the measurement is taken too. So we felt the definition was just, was lacking a little bit, and so this is to clarify those points, uh, within the definition.
Thank you. Okay.
We, clear information too, we didn't have any comments at our meeting as far as public comment. There, there were no comments made, so.
Is why we don't have it on our agenda for tonight?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Because, um, mostly I wanted to make sure that if you could all be here, you'd all be here. And, and we've, because we have such unrest by some citizens in the city at this point, I wanted it, I wanted it to be clear that we're not rushing through something. So that you've got plenty of time to think about it. We, we held the hearings, we had discussion, plenty of time to think about it, and we can, yep.
Did you have anyone in attendance listening to your discussion of this?
We had a couple of people as well. We did receive two letters, right? One was just criticizing us for the way that we're doing things. And the other had some, some parrots on it. And, uh, so anyway, we had that information available to us. After these, this morning.
So I'll, I'll step out on a limb here. I feel like people are uneasy with recent things we've passed, for example, this building height. Only because they might not remember or know all of the steps you had gone through to try to come up with something that was good. But I don't know, I'm sure I'm wrong, but I, I feel like a definition like this might not be understood, and I don't know how to fix that.
I, I listened to a portion of it. And, um, one of the criticisms, if I remember right, was that it needed to be in engineering, from an engineer's viewpoint. And, um, I was impressed with the proactive approach that Ted Mickelson made, who is an engineer. And I think that, uh, that his influence is all over these, these definitions.
Okay.
And so, um, not only is he an engineer, but he's an engineer in this field. And so I, I give that lots of credibility. Uh, and so I, I'm, uh, I'm very comfortable with, with what we have here.
Right, right.
Well, and I think additionally, he showed it to some other engineers.
I think that was.
Was that was a different, that was a different?
Previous to other things. Um, he may have showed it again, I don't know.
Okay.
But, you know, it, it's very, it's very comforting to me to have, um, Ted on there. Uh, also, um, I, I just think we have a good balance on the, on the planning commission right now. And I think they're very thoughtful, and they try to respond. But there's just some people right now, now that you couldn't make happy if you gave them a million dollars. Yeah.
Okay. Any more?
It's concerning, yes.
It is.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Okay, any comments or questions about the definition for finished grade points and natural grade?
But you just like, like Doral said, you just kinda have to reread it again because it's so lengthy, but it's needed because they have to be very clear on our definition.
Right.
Well, hello sunshine.
Welcome to Paul, we're sorry about the miscommunication. Um, okay, the third thing is, do you have any questions or concerns or discussion you wanna have about sports courts altering our?
I, I would be interested in the background of what, what brought up this change. Is there someone with a setback issue now that was asking or?
A lot of our lots in the city are, are 119, which is smaller obviously than the one acre. And so there's several people who have looked at putting sport courts in, but they're, they're really, they're really, to follow the same setbacks as their home, it makes it difficult to meet that requirement. And so we thought that they're, why not? Put it in the same category as accessory buildings. So that, that's kind of what the moving idea was behind it. Make it a little less cumbersome or difficult for people who wanna put a sport court in with some of the smaller lots that we have in the city now.
Does a fence follow the same setback rules as, say, this, this sport court change? I mean.
To some degree, to some degree.
To me, it's just a big fence on one side, close to somebody's property, right?
A person could put up a fence if they choose, but some may not choose to put a fence up with a sport court.
Oh, I see.
So.
Not that good of a shot when I'm shooting my basket.
People have put their house kind of more wide at the set back, but then there's no room for the sport court because it comes on all sides, so this would give it the same definition as an accessory building. I think that makes perfect sense because.
Yes, I think it's a, it's a, a good, uh, it's a good decision, and I just kinda like, uh, Doral in that it's always interesting to understand the, the genesis of why something's coming up. To give a little bit of context. But I, but I don't see anything wrong with what we have here.
Great.
So will this be on, all three of these things be on our next agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, that number four is a resolution amending the city consolidated fee schedule. Joni?
Sorry, um, the increase in the, the work that Hamilton City is passing on to us.
Salem pacing.
Passing on to us. As of July 1st, that increase went into effect, and so we need to.
It went from about 18 to 1900, was it very much?
No, this is the monthly fee.
Oh, monthly fee went up.
Or, a monthly fee went up by a dollar.
Oh.
It's not significant at this time, but we can expect, uh, future increases as well.
So it's a dollar per customer?
Customer.
Okay.
For, for a month.
Okay, so we will be voting on that tonight, right?
Yes.
Okay. So any questions or concerns about that? Uh, the next, number five is the ordinance amending city code title 5-4-2, parentheses, D, one, fire sprinkler systems. Greg?
I noticed in our packet, nothing was highlighted, so how do we know what the change is?
All I did, I, all I did was take it back to the way it was prior to a school publication.
Oh.
It had been put in, quite a bit of it had been omitted. More sprinkler requirements. So, stuff like garages.
Okay, I see it where it says proposed new code. Thought it's all brand new.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and all it's doing is it's putting it back to the way we've been, we've been doing it since I've been here. So part of that comes down to one, when there was a place code. Um, and the others.
And that is on the agenda tonight, okay.
So are, are these bullet points, A through C, or, I guess they're not bullets, but those points, are they taken from this fire code, or are these unique to us?
Yeah, no, they're not unique to us. It's kind of a mixture from law, land, urban interface, just trying to find out where all of them came from. But they all came from either, uh, international fire code or law, land, urban interface.
My only concern is, is that if one of those documents change, then we have to come in and change this.
Well, yeah, and, but we've adopted some stuff that's a little different than law, land, or urban.
That's, that's why I asked the question about it being different. So, so since we're, we're merging two together, I, I understand it, so I'm okay.
Yeah, it was, unless we did vote. But they tried to, even the law, land, urban interface is trying to steer away from sprinkler requirements. Uncertain thing. So, like county has been in over 5,000, 6,000. And the county, and then have water source. So, but we're, we're in the law, land, urban interface, especially the extreme portion.
Uh huh.
Yeah. That's why it's written the way it is.
Okay.
Good fix.
Okay, any other questions or concerns on that? Okay, number six, review of projects in the city. Power presentation by council member Ottley.
Okay, so let me do this. Share. Well, let's go back to the beginning. So I, uh, thought that it was important that we, I don't know why it's changing automatically.
It's like excited.
But maybe I just need to talk. This is what I'll do, I will, um, take it, let me stop sharing and I'll do it in the PowerPoint. So, well, while that's, while I'm doing that, I think it, I think it was important that we, um, recognized all of the accomplishments that have been, um, made by the city over the last year, year and a half. And so I proposed this and was given basically the go-ahead to, uh, go ahead and, and put something together. So here's, uh, it's basically eighteen months from the beginning of 2020 to 21. I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail because there's a lot of stuff that happened, and we have a lot of, a lot of time here, but, mitigation, uh, that was a big effort that we've, uh, we've accomplished. Took a lot of, of, of people and moving parts to make it happen. It's good to have it behind us. And, uh, the biggest hope is that we never have to use it. It involved multiple areas of the city. But it, basically, uh, the upper area around the park and that. It also involved in cleaning up a lot of the sandbags and K rails that were around, and so, so we've done a lot of that. Another thing that has happened is that, um, chipper days are here for another year. And so that's basically because of, of a, a grant that Fire Chief went out and did. During, as part of the, the mitigation, the erosion on the switchbacks was taken care of. And, uh, water bars were installed. And the water bars, um, I took a trip up there last week, they're in very good shape. And I don't think we have to worry about, um, people driving through them in mud because of the way they're constructed. So I think that they're gonna be around for a long time, and, and that we don't have to worry a lot about those. Also, as part of the, the switchbacks, there's signs that are, have been put up about how to gain access to it, and what are some of the, uh, the plants and that along the way that, that are identified by these different posts. A big effort is the failing drinking water infrastructure. Many of, of that, many of that infrastructure is over 40 years. Um, and because of the number of water breaks that we had over a time period, we were on the state rural water board's watch list. And because of that, we were able to get some very, uh, good bond interest rates, zero percent. Uh, they funded us for 1,700 linear feet, that's over three miles of, of this PVC. And, um, and because of creativity of our employees, uh, the big PRVs, pressure relief valves, we, we built them ourselves. And, uh, that was a savings, there were six of them, we, we did that at about $30,000 savings each. So that was, um, $180,000 in savings just by doing that one, uh, element of it versus purchasing it.
And I would like to say that to be diplomatic, we're St. City employees, but it was really 99.9% one, one great employee, Corbett, thank you.
Yep.
You're, you're more than one employee now, see?
The, also, along that same line, because of the, because of Corbett and because of the committees that we have, we were able to, uh, not just repair the roads that were disturbed by the water pipes, but we're replacing them, which is, um, which is very good and very interesting that we're able to do that, that it's cheaper to replace it than to repair it. And so that, that's, that's great. So, um, yes, water has, the, the water lines have been a, a big interruption in people's lives and made it, made it uncomfortable and, and all those kinds of things. But I think all of that discomfort is a lot less than having an emergency of a water line breaking. At least now when the water goes out, you know that it's going to.
And I think by and large, our citizens have been very patient and accommodated, so I appreciate them. Okay, thanks, Bob.
Because of COVID, there was some CARES money that was available to us as a grant, and there was a lot of strict guidelines on how that could be used. We went off and researched it, and we were able to do, uh, some very interesting things. We were able to buy, um, acquire several pieces of equipment for our EMS folks. Uh, one of them is this life pack, which, uh, provides a lot more information to our EMS folks. It provides it in a more timely fashion. It, um, is, is more accurate than the old equipment. And, uh, so this piece of equipment, uh, has, has been used by our EMS to assist citizens in Woodland Hills already, and it has been proven to be very valuable. Another, uh, piece of equipment that we have is the, uh, it's an automatic CPR machine. And the true value of that is, one is that it provides a consistent rate of compressions. It provides the correct depth of the compression, it provides alerts. And it's not like a human being, it doesn't get tired, and so it doesn't have to, need, doesn't have to be relieved. And so, again, this is another piece of equipment that has been used by citizens in Woodland Hills since its purchase, and again, been very valuable. Uh, another one is, is this ambulance cot or gurney. It, what it does is it primarily puts us, uh, in compatibility with the, the Salem ambulance so that our EMS folks don't have to wait for the Salem ambulance to arrive to start loading the person onto the cot. They can do it as soon as they arrive, and when the Salem ambulance arrives, it's compatible, and so they just load the person and go, and again, saving valuable time, and it's been used by our citizens. Another thing that we've done is, is this room, we've enhanced it and made this broadcast system available. I think that, um, we're, we're learning how to use it, and I think that it provides us a lot of avan, uh, availability and advantages. One is, is that if we didn't have it, we wouldn't be able to share this slide presentation. And when we show budget, when we show budget information, uh, we're now able to share that with everybody, and they can see it, and it makes the meetings a lot more meaningful to them, and so uh, not only do we, are we able to get things out to people, but we're able to, uh, make it a more valuable meeting. Another thing that we've done is we, uh, got acoustic paneling for the multipurpose room. That makes that room a lot more useful for meetings, it doesn't echo, and, um, just the quality of the sound has, has increased significantly because of that. And just the quality of the sound has, has increased significantly because of that. During this time period, the Fire Department has, has gotten the Type Six brush truck up and running, thanks to the Fire Chief. With a little bit of help, I guess, from the volunteers, they built this thing. And it's a very impressive piece of equipment. And it will continue to be a great asset to our city. And again, this is something that's been used to help the citizens of our city. We are leasing a couple of trucks for public works. They are larger capacity than what we had because they're newer, there's less downtime. They, like I said, they have larger capacity. They are multifunctional, they function as a dump truck, a flatbed, and a snowplow. And because of the timing in getting them, we were able to use them as part of the flood mitigation. And that helped us a lot in getting the, the match that we needed. Another thing that, that is going on is the communications. The, the city website has been enhanced and it's just much more useful. And you can search for things a lot easier. And so if you haven't gone in and looked at that, I would encourage you to do so. We've also implemented a online building permit process, which has streamlined it. I think it's reduced a lot of the confusion and complaints that people have had about where the, what the status of documents were that were required. And, and I believe during this time that we've had that up and running. We've issued like thirty-one new building permits. That, that's a lot for our city. We've also implemented a variety of committees. Financial, Parks and Trails, Communication, Public Works, Transparency, and we're exploring Community Development. We, as a council, rely heavily on these for input. The citizens do a great deal of research for us and provide valuable recommendations. And help, and help our process along a lot. The parks, we're doing some improvements there because of community involvement. We're going to be putting in a split rail fence along Lofer and Grizzly. We're going to be putting a trail in there, these maps are just kind of showing a portion of that. But this split rail fence will be very attractive. Here's a sample, one of our citizens, I took a picture of their fence, it's just like that. It's a, it's a, the Parks and Trails Committee has worked very hard at, along with the city, to make the implementation of this less maintenance, maintenance free as much as possible for the city workers. So we're not going to have to weed eat and all that kind of stuff.
And with grant money, right?
Yes. City isn't paying for any of that. We're also doing some beautification, you can see some of that around the city center right now. We've put in a, a rock retaining wall and we've lined the detention pond. Here in the coming weeks, we'll be putting in some grass. And later this fall, we will be putting in a bunch of, of plants to, to improve the, the look of the city center. We're exploring and looking at increased security at the water tanks. We're looking at commercial-grade, high-resolution, high-quality cameras that are supported by software that will be proactive in identifying when a human enters into a restricted area. And it will send city employees notifications so that we can be proactive in any of that type of problem areas that we have. We had the employee retire Patty, and we've replaced her with two other part-time employees. Laura Thomas as the treasurer, she's working hard at, at meeting some state requirements on financial compliance. Marcy Brown has done a lot of the work on the new website that we, we have available. She's creating and establishing data archives and a comprehensive records retention plan, which can be very valuable. And she's also assisting with all of the increased requirements that record, that the recorder has to do. Many of those are unfunded, unfunded state mandates. We did do a, a employee salary analysis with a retired, retired HR professional. That plan, that analysis was, was presented to the, the council a year or so ago. And it found that we had one employee that was above range, one that was below range, and the rest were within range. And we discussed a corrective action plan to, to try to solve that. But it was not as far out of line as many people believed. So we've, we've been able to get four grants, we've talked a little bit about some of those. We've got the, the CARES Act, we got a little over a hundred thousand dollars, we talked about what that's doing. The Parks and Trails got a grant for the split rail fence and the trail there, plus some community donations. And so that, that project isn't going to cost the city anything. There's already people lined up with equipment and that to, to do that. When the, when the parts arrive later, I guess next month. We received a three thousand dollar grant for Woodland Hills Days to, to supplement the money that we have there. And that money comes from a fund in the state to celebrate the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of statehood for Utah. And then we talked also about Chipper Day Fire Abatement. That grant is helping us out there. And then last of all, we were able to get through codification. And because of that, much of the work on the website is able to be done and the searchability of, of everything there. So, th- those are some of the things, I think, I'm sure I missed some things and I may have not covered some things as much as, as we could have. But I think we, we have a lot that we've accomplished. And I think that it's important for us to, to brag about it. One of the things that I would tell people when they were doing their resumes, if they don't brag about it, then nobody else will. I believe that if we don't brag about these things, many people won't know what's happened. That's it.
Okay.
A couple of questions. You sent that out, I saw a couple of very, very small typos.
Yep.
Yeah.
Is there any way we could, I mean, you kind of did that on one of the last slides here, but if we had in the mitigation, I think it'd be really cool to say, look, all of this work was done, this much of it was not out of our budget. Relatively, a small percentage.
Right. Yeah, what, twenty-five percentage, thirty percent, something like that. But yeah, and again, I think that the, the grant thing kind of shows the, wherever that was. You know, we're, we're now looking for ways to fund it. And you, you look at, you look at some of the grants that we have. One of the analysis I did recently was how much money of the property tax does the city get? And, and if you, and what, what the city gets is two hundred and thirty-eight dollars for every hundred thousand dollars of, of appraised tax value. So if, I, I don't know that we have any homes that are appraised at a million dollars. So we're not getting twenty-three hundred dollars per home. Most of the, most of the taxes are going to school. And that's the way it is through the whole state. And then the second biggest is, second biggest increase is county. Typically, the, the city of Woodland Hills, as you compare it to the value of the home, is actually going down.
Yeah, I think, the other thing it does is it highlights what certain people have done. You get that, you look at, you know, you look at Corbett, you look at.
Yep.
Those, it's, it's extra funds that allow us to do it. You look at, I mean, all those who are participating in the water.
Yep.
Now, it's huge, if the grant that we got, if the interest, if the subsequent stuff, it's just.
Yeah, if, if I had time, I would like to go try, and try to put in some dollar values to this and, and kind of show what the dollar value impact of all of this work is. Because I think it's, it's significant.
I was going to say that I can get you some numbers for mitigation because there's quite a lot on mitigation, whether it's the funding we got from the state or the federal government and/or just the manpower that was put in and volunteer hours, those types of things, I'll get that to you.
Yep, so there, there's lots of information that's missing here. But it, it is a high level of just giving us an idea of, of what we've done.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for doing this, this is fantastic.
Send us out this final copy.
I will do it, I will have to do a shared link because with the pictures, it's too big to share.
Well, and this would be.
Maybe just a Google Drive link or something.
This would be great for our town hall meeting in September, too.
Yes.
This would be fantastic.
Did we decide what day that's on?
Good.
Yes. Thanks, good question. All right, thank you Bob, that's great. The next item on the agenda is a formation of a Community Development Committee. Also you Bob.
Let us still be an explored.
Okay.
And probably will be through the end of this year.
Okay, I'm going to take this off our agenda and when you want it on again, then you let me know.
We, we are meeting and there's lots of things. And once we, you know, we, we may not be able to do anything.
Right.
But we're looking at what the options are, we're looking at seeing if we can't get some grant money to help us to do some analysis. And, and that will tell us a lot where we need to go.
Okay, thanks for your work on that, too. All right, Corbett, you're up next. We're first going to talk about putting an antenna on the city building and then you can give us a public work.
We, we, we upgraded our system. I don't remember when it was, but when we upgraded the water system, we went to a vehicle unit to read meters instead of just the handheld because it's governed by power. Talking with Mountainland, they, they have other systems, other cities that have gone with the same system that, that put it on a pole. And so we tried it, we, you know, it was very crude, we put it on some cement, cement handles, for cement tools. We got it up about twenty feet above the roof. And we could read, at the time, we could read four hundred and eleven of the four hundred and twenty-nine meters from the city office. And so I'm just proposing that we, that we make it a permanent, we put it forty feet tall. Hopefully, we'll be able to read, if we can't read a hundred percent, anything that we can read is going to be, you know, relatively better than what we have right now. That way, when, when somebody moves in or moves out, Lori can read the meters from here and it doesn't take sending somebody out. If somebody has a question about how, their water usage, she can read the meters anytime anybody calls. Relatively easy from her desk instead of having to go out and read the meters. So.
So how high above the roof line would this forty feet be?
Forty feet.
Forty feet above the roof line?
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about the aesthetics of it. This may, may not be a good question, but what, would it be possible to put it at the water tanks?
It's line of sight. The radio is line of sight. And so if you can pick something up that's not line of sight, it's a really, really weak signal. So, the, the issue with putting it at the water tanks is then you have to put a computer at the water tanks and then you have to have a link between the computer up there and the computer down here. So just for ease of doing it, I'm going to put it right here. We've checked in our code, Wayne, Wayne and I talked about it, we can't find anything in our code that restricts it.
How, how big is?
It's a piece of three-quarter inch pipe.
That's all it is, it doesn't have any, if, any lattice type work.
But it'll take guide wires, I assume.
Yeah, yeah, we'll put guide wires at the top and midpoint. Guide wires are just eighth-inch aircraft cable, steel cable.
And lightning protection?
Yeah. Above Lori's office, down on that end. Just, I mean, probably ten feet back from the end of the, from the gable end of the building just so the guide wires can go down to the eve and then one that would come back to the ridge.
But so the guide wires wouldn't reach the ground anywhere?
No.
Okay.
The antenna, the antenna, it looks like a piece of one-inch PVC. And it just threads to the end of the three-quarter inch rigid galvanized pipe.
It's mounted on the roof?
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be, if it were on the siren pole? Yeah, yeah, it'll be, it'll probably be twenty-five feet taller than the siren pole.
That's pretty tough.
It's way up there.
How big is it, I mean, like, is it in diameter, how big is it? So people might not even notice it because it's so high, but it will have probably some of those eight-year wires.
The guy, the guy wires are only eight, guy wires are only eighth-inch braided steel cable.
You won't see the guy wires and if, if the, if the antenna is really small, so it's not like a cell tower or some of those other big things that we see on buildings.
Right, no, it's not.
And who's designing this antenna structure? Where, where, where the guy wires, guy wires go and all of that stuff?
The guy wires will come back down into the attic.
But who's, who's determining how far up the attic that goes?
It's true.
It's just a piece of pipe.
Yeah, well, my concern is, other than just look, how far up the antenna do you put the guy, guy wires?
One in the middle and one at the top, a set at the, a set in the middle and a set at the top.
Okay, set.
Three in the middle and three at the top.
Okay, okay.
So Corbett, Joey, any idea how much time does it save on a monthly, monthly basis, let's say?
So a forty-foot pole sticking up, we would no longer be able to have at the, with the Fire Expo, we'd no longer be able to have the helicopter come.
Yeah, you put a light at the top, right?
Whatever you want. You run power.
Would it prohibit?
I don't, I don't know that they would, I don't know that they would come that close to that. I, I don't know, I, I could be totally wrong.
I mean, would, would twenty feet make a difference?
I don't, I don't. Yeah, I, I think that would be a good question. Yep, depending on the wind, all that stuff. But I, again, I don't know that that's a reason to do it or not do it. But it is a reason to consider as we make that decision. Well, that, that was part of the, that was kind of the next question is that, how high does it have to be to have a flashing light on it? I, not, I don't know the answer. I think that it's a very valid project to, to look at. I just have a few questions that I think we need to answer before we jump off that cliff. But I, I, I think that it's, it will pay for itself.
Okay, I think we have a question from Mark Sobin. Mark?
You're on mute, Mark.
There you go. Yeah, yeah, just just a question. Why would, why a three quarter inch conduit versus one of those triangle shaped regular antennas that are designed for that? They're they're not that much more expensive and I'm not sure you would need the guy wire. You can use those. Did you research that?
No, I just, all I did was ask Mountainland for an antenna for the census meter reader and that's what they, that's what they recommend.
Okay, yeah, I I mean, I would think that we could probably look at one of those, and that's what they're designed for is like Omni antennas or that type of stuff for communication. They're they're what, about 15 to 18 inches triangle square and they they're got the, all the triangle reinforcement in them. That's what they're designed for and you can build them, you know, 60, 70 feet high without too much trouble. I I would just say, you know, maybe we could at least look at one of those before going with a, with the, with the three quarter inch and all the guy wires.
We're already going to be asking a bunch of questions. Okay. Why not ask one more if that's not too much? I don't know. I think that's a valid point because I I am kind of concerned about the stability of a three quarter inch pipe. That's kind of why I asked, you know, who's designing it and where the cables are going to go. I think that that two sets is good, but I don't know that that's too many or and I don't know if that's too, not enough. But it would be you know, I wouldn't want it to fall down on somebody's car or something like that.
Right. Yeah.
This is Chris. Hey, I'm wondering, we've already got a rack and some computers up at the water tower. We have that that tower that Digis put up that we have space on that we're able to put stuff. And we have a link from the, a wireless link, 90 megabytes from that tower up top down to the city center that we can run a backhaul on.
So, Chris, hold on. So we're having a really hard time hearing you. You said we've already got, what did he say? A computer and a rack up at the water tanks?
We have a, we have a rack system. We can put a computer in it.
A rack system? We can put a computer in, okay?
I don't know what that means.
We have a wireless link.
And a wireless link?
Connected back to the fire station.
To connect stuff up there at the tank to the fire station?
Yes. And we have a tower already in place.
And we have a tower that's already in place?
How tall is a tower?
How good of reception?
That has what reception?
I don't know how good of reception.
So what what would it take to, you know, you did a 20 foot test here? What would it take to do a 20 foot test at the water tank just to find out, see, you know?
Mountainland, Mountainland has been really good to work with as far as helping us figure it out.
Great.
I'll get, I'll see if I can get those guys to come up to the water tanks and see if we can do the same thing up there and see if we can't read meters better from there. And then we just need to figure out how to get it from there down to here.
Yeah.
And be able to make it so that Lori can do it whenever she wants. All right.
Yeah, we we need the ease of use, but I I I'm a lot more comfortable with the water tanks than
I'll find out.
than here and and if it, even if it costs a little bit more, I'd say let's go to the water tanks. The issue is, will it work effectively?
Well, I don't, I don't see, I mean, I, it's, again, it's line of sight and so I don't know if the water towers, the the tower at the tanks is gonna, is gonna be better than here. I don't know.
Yep. Well, you you may need something less than 40 feet. You may need something more than 40 feet up there to get the line of sight, so I don't know.
But I mean, just for reference, we read a meter in Lehigh. I don't know why, but yeah, we can read a meter. I mean, there's, if if you have the programmer or if you have, if you have the number for the MXU, that's the radio and and you have the number for the meter and those two numbers are together, then then it can read, that's how it reads meters. But I mean, when we first set it up, there was a meter that was programmed into it that was in Lehigh. So.
Line of sight.
Yeah.
I'll make it.
Okay.
All right.
On our regular agenda, the ability to take action on approving that, do you need to do anything else if you want to take action or should we, shall we table that from our regular agenda till?
There's, there's no hurry for this.
Yeah, let's, let's wait. If there's no hurry. I re- appreciate getting to this, Corbett. I think that's a good idea. Yeah, just to just the nitty things.
Okay, hold on. Looking up the day of that meeting so I can.
I can see that more and more water is going to become an issue and anything you can do to get real kind of information to people is, hey, go check your sprinkler.
Yeah.
Right. Could be helpful.
Yep.
Okay, so that'll be, we'll talk about that again on August 10th. All right. Next, thanks, Corbett. Okay, now we're still on you, so you can do public works update for us.
So on the water line replacement, they've started, they've started phase two A. They haven't finished phase one only because of semantics. So they got everything down broad hollow. We got everything tied in at the top of broad hollow to tie in the the old pump line, the newer, I say old pump line, 1965, the new pump line, 1997. The the 12 inch line coming down from the tanks, they got all that done last week. And then they started, since they were at the top of town with all of their equipment, they started on settlement, which is phase two A. They're probably halfway, if not a little bit better on that. The service crew has already gone through and cleaned out most, if not all of the water meter cans. So it's coming along really well. Soon as they're done there, then they'll go down to finish Valley View. So they've got about 300, 400 feet on Valley View left to finish. The service line, or the mainline crew will go down to Valley View while the service crew starts on settlement, doing the pressure test, the back T, the flushing, and then hooking up the services. Then while the ser-, or while the mainline crew finishes Valley View, then once they're done with Valley View, the service crew will just come down to Valley View and do all the same stuff. And while they're doing that, the mainline crew is going to drop down to Maple and do that 900 feet, 890 feet or whatever it is on Maple. And then the service crew will finish that. Once the mainline crew is done with that, then they go back and they disconnect all the old pipes and just, and just connect the new pipes. So it's a process. But they're coming right along.
Did I, where did I miss the paving? Part of that?
The the paving, we met with Geneva last week for like a pre-construction meeting. They they want, once, how many of you kind of watched what happened on Oak on the west side of town? Once the paving crew starts, they're, they're only a couple of days.
Right.
Because they come in and they grind, they grade compact, and then they're putting new asphalt right down. So they want, they want Vancon out of the way. So it doesn't do a lot of good for Geneva to come in to just do broad hollow and spring and then sit and wait for them, for Vancon to finish settlement, Valley View and Maple. So once Vancon is done to where the paving crew can come in and get started and not have to demo, or not have to demobilize or sit and wait for Vancon to finish up, then the the paving crew will come in.
That's why you're waiting on the two foot willow reed, too, right?
Right.
Goes down the finish path.
Well, Vancon is doing that because that's just a, that's a T patch. They call it a T patch. So here's the, here's the edge of the trench. If you just patch the trench, then more often it settles and and that that joint shows up a lot easier. And so they cut it back six inches beyond the trench. That's why it's called a T patch. So so that Vancon will come in and 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 cut all the bad stuff out, dress up the edges of the trench where the PRV vault was and then do that. And so that'll be a different crew with Vancon. Geneva is not doing that because Geneva is just doing the pulverize and new and new asphalt replacement.
All right, I have a question. So are we still, last week, our kind of our water schedule slash, because we have to do finish water before we can do roads. And I know a lot of citizens, we're probably getting calls from a lot of citizens. I get a lot of calls saying, I thought it was going to be done. And of course, we have changed some things along the way. We've added some things. We have multiple phases. And so it makes it difficult for citizens to always know, but according to our talk, our discussion last week, they should be finished with phase one of water by August 22nd. And they should be fit then with and be able to then start the roads this coming week on some of those water line projects that have already been tied in. Is that still correct?
I don't know.
Okay.
We have a meeting with Vancon tomorrow. And we meet with Vancon every week, every Wednesday. So they'll look at their, the weekend review, see how it went based on what they, what their projections were, their upcoming week, their manpower, everything, everything that that goes into it and then reassess. So, yeah, we'll know better.
And I might add, Corbett, sorry for jumping in.
Thanks, Ted.
The, since Vancon is now kind of combining phase one and phase two A of the water line to be able to work in common areas, I mean, basically, they're working to be done in September with both phases. So they're going to kind of intermix the phases right now. But I think the goal is to be done with the water line project mid-ish September with one end to a, the road crew will be starting, I don't think it's next week, but in a few weeks, they'll be starting Geneva and they'll probably be through August trying to get roads done.
Okay, so the, so the pro, the water line project is looking at finishing up in September, so the so the road project might start in a week or two and it will go through August, but it will also go into September because the water line project won't be finished until September. So they're not following the water line project.
Sort of. The the roads that are being done in phase two A are part of the water line project, not part of the road project. Even though they're getting pulverized or repaved. So, yeah, those roads that are part of phase two A won't be done until the water line is done in phase two A. Except for, it's all confusing.
Yeah, that's why it's a little confusing, I think, for the residents is because, again, water line prior to anything with roads and then we have multiple projects going at the exact same time and and then it can change every week depending on a lot of different variables. So I guess as long as you keep us up to date and we can put things out and say, well, for this week, this is what's happening, that will, that will really be helpful. Thank you.
And that was our discussion with Geneva last week is they'll give us schedules of when they're going to be on certain roads. He actually emailed me today. He's working on a schedule right now, but at all, he's kind of waiting to hear what roads we're going to be doing for sure in the road project before he finishes the schedule. And then he'll send the schedule of when they'll be doing what roads.
I think that if we were able to have a week notice on these things, that would be great. I don't, I, you know, I I understand there's a lot of moving parts. But you you know, four or five days, I think is wonderful. And so I, you know, I don't know that we need to try to hold anybody to weeks in advance of 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 the schedules. Yeah. I have a question and it's more for you to to explain the pressure problems that people are have having so that I can make sure that I understand and my my understanding is is correct. So would you mind just kind of sharing why people are getting concerned, excited, spun up over their pressure?
Have as time you got.
Well, as I understand, it depends on where you are in the line is how much.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And and people, I don't think some people recognize that that you may be at the, at the beginning point and your pressure is going to be high and the person at the, at the very end of that, their pressure is going and so so I think that that we have to 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 recognize that there's variations based upon your location in the system.
Pressure is built by elevation. Okay, if you took a one inch column of water, one inch square, and you stacked it 2.31 feet and you filled that column with wa, you filled that column with water, the water in that tube would weigh exactly one pound. So 2.3 feet of water creates one PSI. So 231 feet creates 100 PSI. Okay, I mean, it's just simple math. If you, if you look at the elevation of the tank and then you come down to wherever your house is, then, and you divide that difference by 2.31, that's the pressure you should see at your house. Now, then you go through PRVs. Now, the PRV at the end of Wood and Hills Drive.
This is a city PRV and not a resident PRV.
The PRV at the end of Wood and Hills Drive, we're just talking, talking street, street pressure. So the PRV at the end of Wood and Hills Drive.
Top of the water.
Top. On Eagle Nest. That PRV is exactly 100 PSI different than the PRV on the sharp turn on Skylake. So if the P, if the outlet pressure for Orem's, I think it is, if the outlet, if the outlet pressure at that PRV in Orem's is the very first thing and the road's pretty flat between the PRV and their meter, if their, if their pressure is 40 pounds, then Alan Purvis sees 140 pounds in the same, in the same zone. Okay, so he doesn't like 40 pounds. He wants 60 pounds. Tim Shanto across the street, same thing. They want more pressure, but whatever you give them, add 100 pounds to it and that's what Alan Purvis gets. And so, and that's the worst zone in town as far as the, as far as the pressure difference within the zone. Generally, the zones are only about 60 pounds through the zone. That one is 100 pounds. And so that's, that's some of the issues that you run into trying to, trying to balance to make everybody happy or as happy as you can.
Right.
But that's, that's what you.
So so if if we make an adjustment at homeowner A to get them happy, we're going to impact homeowner A, B, uh, B, C, D, and E with their pressure.
If you add 10 pounds, if you add, if if the pressure at 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 Orem's
Yep.
is 60 pounds, Alan Purvis is 160 pounds.
Yep.
Right. So can you also then explain, because this will be recorded and is being recorded and other city people might be listening in, residents, how that, how our city PRVs are in relation to their home PRV? A lot of citizens don't realize because they bought their home already built. They don't even realize they have a home that it's required. And then some people don't realize that if you use a lot of water in your yard and you don't have a PRV there, it can mess everything up. And just like every other appliance, it goes out and it needs to be replaced.
So whatever the pressure is at the street, if it's more than 80 pounds or it has the potential to be more than 80 pounds, and that's pretty much everybody in town, building code or the plumbing code requires that you have a PRV on your residential line. Most of them are inside the house. There's a few that are outside, but if you're, you're fire, you're irrigation sprinklers. If the pressure, if you have the potential to see more than 80 pounds, then code requires that you put a pressure regulator on it. If a pressure regulator, a residential regulator, and I thought it was 300 pounds, but I've got five sitting on the floor back there, a residential PRV, every one of those back there on the floor has a maximum inlet pressure of 400 pounds. So as long as it's less than 400 pounds, that PRV will do its job. And it's got a maximum outlet pressure unless you disable it. And and so there's a caveat there, right? It's got a maximum outlet pressure of 75 pounds. So if you've got more than 75 pounds inside your house, it's the pop off on your water heater. The pop off on a water heater is generally 210 degrees, 150 PSI. If that's popping off, if it's flooding your basement, your PRV has failed. Because it it won't pop off until it gets to 150 pounds, 150 PSI. A residential PR, a residential PRV has a maximum outlet pressure of 75 pounds. A residential PR, a residential PRV has a maximum outlet pressure of 75 pounds.
And could people have to have them on both entities? I mean, their house and their, their sprinkling system? If somebody doesn't have it on their sprinkling system, can that impact that house, that PRV that you were talking about?
Not unless the sprinklers go through the house.
Would it, well, that's what I'm saying. If it uses just one system of water, would they have to probably replace it sooner, wouldn't they? Because what's the life, what's the lifespan of a PRV, like three to five years?
Depends on how much, how much water you use.
Okay.
Is there things that the city can do or does that impacts the life expectancy of a residential PRV?
Well, if we have a failure in the street, but still, a residential PRV, as long as the inlet pressure is less than 400 pounds.
Which none, no, no place in our city is that high.
Oh, well, it could be if we have a failure in the street.
Right, if we have a failure, but, but, but all of the systems that we have lined up, the max we are is at 150 PSI?
180. The, the highest pressure in any zone in town is 180 pounds. Well, no, we fixed it with the water main replacement. So the highest pressure in any, any place in any zone now is probably right around 150, 160 pounds.
So then, the way that we have it set up does not impact the life expectancy of any one person's PRV?
I don't know how to answer that.
Okay, I guess a lot of people are saying, hey, city, you guys need, you, you've done this and now my PRV isn't working and blah, blah, blah.
But again, a PRV, it has a maximum inlet pressure of 400 pounds. And so as long as the pressure is less than 400 pounds, it's going to do its job as long as it hasn't failed.
Mm-hmm.
Now, there's a, there's a huge difference between residential PRVs and a municipal PRV.
Right.
A residential PRV generally only has one guide. Now, you, you've got, the water comes in, the bottom of the PRV or the top of the PRV, however, however it's designed, and, and it pushes on a seat and it pushes on a small surface area. And so it uses the same pressure to close the PRV as it does to open the PRV, okay?
Okay.
But it's, it's built on surface area. I mean, the dynamics of a pressure reducing valve are built on surface area. So if you've got 100 pounds, if you've got 100 pounds of line pressure and you're trying to open that valve that's only one square inch, for instance, on the seat, but the diaphragm or the bonnet is three square inches, you've got 300 pounds of force closing the valve and 100 pounds of force trying to open the valve. And it can't. So the PRVs in the street, same principle. It uses the, it uses the same pressure to open the valve as it does to close the valve. All you do is you bleed the pressure off the top of the bonnet or the top of the valve and that allows the 100 pounds of pressure coming in to push the valve open.
So if I understand what, what we've talked about here, as long as the city's PRVs are functioning properly, there is no impact to the damage of a residential PRV?
I don't know.
Because we're, we're not going to exceed that 400.
Right, you're not going to exceed that 400. Because I don't, I don't have any idea on the, on how a residential PRV is warranted, you know? But it has, but they all, every one of those back there on the floor has a maximum inlet pressure, a tag right on it says maximum inlet pressure is 400 PSI, maximum outlet pressure is 75 pounds. So as long as it's within its operating range, it's going to do its job. Now, again, everything I've always been told, the thing that affects a PRV, a PRV's life is how much water you run through that valve. So what happens is the valve, the valve's got a stem and there's a guide on that stem. Now, a, a municipal PRV has a stem that goes all the way through and a guide top and bottom. So on mine, all it can do is go straight up and straight down. On yours, inside the house, it's got a guide on the bottom and that's pretty much it. I mean, it'll have a connection to the diaphragm, but that's a rubber connection. But you have the seat and then that seat pushes up against the, the orifice. Well, when that thing opens, the more water you run through that thing, that thing, I, I keep asking the same question. I don't know that waller is a word, but when that thing opens, that thing starts to vibrate. Well, as it vibrates, it's got a guide down here and it's starting to waller out that hole. So it's not, it's not perfectly, it's not machined anymore. It's just brass, they're soft, they're cheap. Mine in the street are stainless steel, but yours are made out of brass or bronze.
So it's elongating the hole.
It sits there and it elongates the hole. And then when it tries to close, it's going up on an angle.
Yep.
And then it doesn't close. And then you see 150 pounds come in the house and your water heater pops off and floods the basement. So if you see more than 75 pounds in the house, your PRV has failed. That's all it can be.
Your PRV has failed if it's more than.
So, and I think part of this too is, is reminding the residents, it's, it's based on how much they've used. So if, if they've bought a house that was previously owned by a huge family.
Let me go back, it's based on how much you use and it's also vastly based on what, I mean, you get what you pay for.
Right.
Now, we jumped online, me and Jody, we were talking about this today. And you can buy a three-quarter inch PRV for 35 bucks. Well, my PRVs in the street, the two inch PRV is 2,800. You know, so you can spend 300, you can spend 150, but you run down to Walmart or the, you know, Kmart, pick it off the roller on the rack and you're going to pay 30 bucks. Well, you better buy two or three because you're going to be replacing a lot.
Yeah, okay, thank you, I appreciate your tolerance.
Um, Corbin, can, can we ask you, I know it will be difficult, but can we ask you, can we film you saying all of this that you just said to us that we might be able to put it out there? Because that's a lot for us to regurgitate and, and although we can say, oh, two point whatever and it happens here and here and here, explaining that difference between the city's PRVs and a residential PRV will be helpful. And then our city, our residents can know that if it is a problem in their house, they need to contact a plumber and that it is not the council's responsibility or your responsibility. But another issue I think is a lot of our homes were built at the same, exact same time. We had a huge growth spurt in our home, in the homes where the projects are currently happening. And so they may be failing just because of the age of the home as well as, you know, they're just more noticed, they're just noticing it more. And, or if they bought their home from a previous owner who didn't replace it, then they might not even know that it, it's not something that just lasts forever. And you, would you think about possibly doing that?
Bottom line, if you've got more than 75 pounds in your house.
75 or 100?
75.
75. So again, the PRV, the PRV's got a bolt that goes down through it. And it's either a hex head or it's got a screwdriver head. Then it's got a set nut and you loosen the nut and then you can twist in the bolt. Well, if it's a hex head bolt, I've seen people take the bolt out, take the nut off and throw it away and put the bolt back in and crank it all the way down. When you do that, you disable your PRV. So when you run that bolt all the way through, you're going to get whatever's out in the street. Now, if, if I've got stuff going on out in the street and, and we have failures in the street and when we have failures in the street, sometimes the pressure oscillates and it's a nightmare trying to track it down. And then, and then the pressure, a PRV doesn't care what the inlet pressure is. The only thing a PRV does is monitors downstream pressure. And it does its best to satisfy and maintain whatever you set the PRV at. Well, if you've got one that's sticking, it's trying and trying and trying to open and then all of a sudden, boom, it opens. Well, as it's trying to open, the downstream pressure keeps dropping, okay? And it's watching that, it's trying to open, but if it's sticking, then it can't. So the pressure downstream keeps dropping, it keeps dropping. And then it opens and boom, it opens and it satisfies the downstream demand. And then, oh, wait a minute, there's too much pressure going. So then it's trying to close and it's trying to close and then, and it's sticking. And so the pressures are doing this. Well, when it's opening and closing really fast, the next PRV uphill, it sees that pressure. And so it's trying to open and close and you get this sine wave, and this is according to the, to the sales rep in the service tech for ClayVal, you get a sine wave going in the, in the water system as far as the pressure. The pressure spikes and the pressure dips and it spikes and it dips. Well, the PRV upstream, it's trying to open and close to, to match that downstream pressure. And, and it just, every, it just freaks out.
You're talking about city?
Yeah. But again, as long as that pressure never exceeds 400, as soon as it exceeds 400 pounds, we're blowing up pipes. I mean, the pipes in the ground are, I mean, you remember when Christmas, when we replaced the, the piping in the wellhouse? That one, Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve, whatever it was?
Yeah.
Um, the piping is only rated at 120, well, the flanges are rated at 125 pounds. The pipe is rated at 250. It has a burst, you know, a burst of, you know, double that. But i- if we've got, if we've got 400 pounds in the street, we got bigger problems than you do.
Yeah.
But again, if you see more than 75 pounds, your PRV has failed.
Thanks, I appreciate that. Is there any update on West Lofer road work?
I guess that's next, right? Are we moving on from the water to road projects?
I'm sorry. I'm jumping again.
I just, I don't want to put you on the, on the spot anymore, but when do you think you could have that recording done?
You're just asking to think about doing it. So now you can't make him say.
We'll do it next week.
He hasn't even agreed to do it yet.
No, he said yes.
Oh, did I?
Yes, he said yes. It was last night here, yes. So they're going to do it next week. Okay, so we can just get it out there. I think it's really important. I mean, I think maybe you're all getting as many phone calls as I am about it, but it would be nice to be able to have that link.
Maybe we could pull your explanation off.
And not, not to be cynical, but everybody, generally, people want the problem to be the city's problem. Because if it's the city's problem, it doesn't cost me anything. It doesn't cost you anything if it's the city's problem.
Just costs you tax dollars.
And so the first thing they do is they call the city. Well, then they call a plumber and the plumber comes in and tells them, well, your water pressure is too high coming in from the street. They can't fix that. You know, it is what it is. When, when Bushnell's put the PRVs in, did they put them in too far apart? When Don put the PRV in up at the top of Woodland Hills Drive on Eagle Nest, was it too high? I mean, whatever.
Yeah.
Everybody wants it to be the city's fault because if it's the city's fault, it doesn't cost them anything.
Yeah, blame it.
It costs, it costs tax dollars.
Can I, can I add? I think what I'm hearing from most people too is the oscillation, which can happen. And I think that's where people think maybe they're getting damaged. But as Corbin mentioned, even if the pressures are going up and down, if they go less than 75, you're going to see a little less pressure in your house. And if they go up to 75 or greater, your house will still hold it to 75, your house PRV. Or whatever you set it at. You set it less than that, but, so their house is still protected. They're just kind of feeling the oscillation as Cor is been working on trying to get these PRVs balanced. It shouldn't do any damage to their home system. And if it is, then something's probably wrong with their PRV because they're getting pressures greater, as Cor mentioned, than 75. So it could feel oscillation, but it shouldn't do damage.
Humming, I mean, you've probably heard people complaining about humming.
We've got a big time in my house. But you haven't heard me complain.
Well, but generally, when, when a PRV hums, it's because it's wore out. And what it does is, again, it's trying to close and it's not going up and down square. It's trying to close, well, it's just off just a tiny bit. So the water keeps screaming through that crack or that, right? And so, a- again, a PRV only looks at downstream pressure, tries to maintain whatever you set it at. But if you're seeing more than 75 pounds, it's, it's failed.
Good information.
Okay, great, so moving on.
Roads.
Yes.
Again, as soon as Geneva, or as soon as VanCon is far enough along that Geneva can come in and not catch up to them too fast, I, I think that's the plan as far as starting the pulverizing. They're going to start in our pre-con the other day. Geneva's going to start on Broad Hollow, work down to Spring. Hopefully be able to do settlement while they're there and then just keep working down and get everything done. Sky Lake? Do you want to talk about Sky Lake?
I do. I'm.
So what, first, West Lofer. When we, when we did the, the phasing or the water pro, or the road projects that were part of the water project and then the road projects that were part of the road bond, when we did all of that, we decided that West Lofer was enough, was enough of an anomaly that we didn't dare commit until we knew how much money was left from the projects that we had destroyed the roads because of the water. So West Lofer has been sitting over there now as the highest priority once we get all of this other stuff done. Once we get phase one done and phase two A done, then West Lofer became the top of the list. I've had several residents, so as far as West Lofer, I don't know. Me and Zach washed out the culvert. I still need to get brave enough to climb up that, climb up inside that culvert or send Zach up that culvert to, to measure how far it's collapsed and how big of a culvert we can get in around, or get inside the one that's collapsed before we can determine what it's going to, what it's going to take to make it work. So we still don't have all the information on West Lofer to be able to pin down how much it's going to cost us. So, Sky Lake?
One reason that I think it's important that we consider Sky Lake is we're, we're already going to be paving all of Spring, all of Broad Hollow and Sky Lake's in between the two. And being, being able to have them on site at that particular time and for such a low cost, isn't it like 160 a square foot or something like that to be able to do Sky Lake? I think makes sense, other than coming back with heavy equipment over our brand new roads again to redo it just in the next phase. So for me, it's cost effective. I think it's really important that we get that done. We're having more use on those roads. There's some hu, probably you guys don't ever even go over there. There's some huge, huge potholes. And I know that we want to make sure that there's access, not only to residents, but for our emergency personnel without having to use a ATV to get around everything. But that's my opinion. Do you have anything to add? Yes, I'm asking you to add and what you want to add, that's what I want to add.
The upper part of Sky Lake, if you haven't driven it, drive it. Keep your eyes open. Or you'll be doing, you know, suspension work on your vehicle. It is, it's, it's absolutely terrible. It's the bastard child, it's just neglected and it's up there where nobody, you know, is. And now there's a house at the very bottom of it. I mean, the top above McKay, McKay Brown and who's the guy on the other side? Darren Burke.
Dan, Darren Burke.
Um, once you get past their driveways and it goes really steep down to the Hammerhead, it's.
Bad. And, and if any of you.
Snowplow.
Yeah, and that's another issue, right? Is it's, it's the wear and tear on the plows, having to go through that, that, um, conditions. It's the ability to pay for something that, why we already have the equipment there. It's increased use of that. It's, it's emergency personnel being able to get there. I think it's a no-brainer that we, we do it at the same time.
In the interim.
So where's the money?
Have some of your residents just, or stand that it's in the potholes because that's what.
Yeah, that's what they're doing.
Somebody did it on my screen.
So the money, where does the money come from? The money comes from that pot that's left over from all the other projects that we're hoping we have enough to do West Lofer. So we're, we're taking money out of that. I mean, that, that, we've never committed, that's why we didn't commit to West Lofer because we didn't know what that dollar amount was until we get done with all of the change orders, with everything else. But when you're looking at, at Sky Lake and you're only talking 600 feet of road.
If you just do the top, if you do top and bottom, I think it's 1,000. But still, at a dollar 60 a square foot, it's not much.
600 feet, I think Mark Silvine measured it and 600 feet goes from the top where Broad Hollow hits. And we're going to do that part with, with the road bond.
Right.
600 feet goes all the way down to the Hammerhead.
Right, and then that second section that goes from the top, from where Spring is, on that part up, back up to the Hammerhead on the lower side, so that both sides get done. Sky Lake, I think has a big hole in the middle where the street doesn't go through anymore.
It's too steep. By design, right.
Right.
Mark, mark the top.
I, I can give you some numbers too, if you'd like some numbers for those, rough numbers. I, I can give you some numbers too, if you'd like some numbers for those, rough numbers.
Yeah, sure.
Because I've been kind of communicating with the contractor today, because that's what we're just waiting on, some changes for him. He's trying to save schedule and stuff, Geneva. But to do that six hundred feet from Broad Hollow down to the Hammerhead, um, so, let me talk to where we're at now. So with the road project, we pulled a little bit of the road work out of Vancon's contract and put it into Geneva's contract. So right now, we're spending roughly three hundred and seventy thousand dollars on the road project. Skylake, that six hundred feet of Skylake between Broad Hollow and Hammerhead is roughly twenty-five thousand dollars to do that piece. The lower piece will be somewhere around that amount too, probably a little less. So, you know, we're talking forty, fifty thousand dollars to all of Skylake. That would be added on to the three seventy that Geneva currently has in their contract. So we'd be probably a little over four hundred thousand out of the, whatever that is, six hundred thousand road bond money we have. That's where that money would come from.
Can I chime in here?
Go ahead, Mark.
Okay, I just didn't know if I was there. So, a, a couple of questions. I've heard kind of two schools of thought here, doing just the upper half of Skylake and doing the entire section of Skylake. I guess that would be down to Spring Drive. One, one question I have, well, you know, as, as Ted just pointed out, you know, any money we spend there is obviously money we won't be able to use on West Lofer. Uh, we are looking at a serious, uh, you know, I, I won't say serious, but we are looking at some pretty good costs with left, West Lofer if we design that to what we need to do to city standards. But the other question I have is, on that section between Hammerhead and Spring, what is the grade on that? Because it seems like there was some concern about the grade be exceeding a maximum city code.
I don't know exactly, but we shut down a portion of it. Well, Skylake was twenty-five percent. But when we shut, when, uh, when McKay, I think it was McKay that, that subdivided and built the Hammerhead, they raised the Hammerhead, they raised the asphalt at the Hammerhead ten or twelve feet.
Which would have increased the grade.
So that, that lessened the grade from the Hammerhead up.
Right.
So...
But it increased, it would have increased the grade from the Hammerhead down to Spring.
Right. Uh, uh, at least until you get back to the asphalt. And so, the asphalt above from the Hammerhead up is less than twenty-five. The, the asphalt from Spring up, um, I guess, we got a PRV on that steep part, but from, from Spring up, it's probably, well, it's less than twenty-five, because it wasn't as steep as the center, as the middle section that we abandoned, or that we just...
I, I guess we think that on the lower part, that when we do that, that we repave the part that's already paved, that we don't extend it beyond, beyond where the pavement is today. Because I, I think we're, we're getting, it, it just seems super steep to me. Particularly up to the upper end of that, and that, uh, we, we don't, we don't need cars going on that.
No, that's why we actually...
School buses.
Not, I'm not saying pave in the middle. I'm just saying pave from that turn on Spring up and then to the Hammerhead on down.
Just partway up.
Yeah, partway up.
Not, not...
I didn't understand that.
There's a section that we don't even have a road base on.
Right. There's a, there's a portion of that that was filled in when McKay did the Hammerhead. And so from the bottom of that fill, the toe of that slope down to Spring, might, might only be a couple hundred feet.
And remember, we have, we have lots on there that are buildable lots that we have to provide the infrastructure for because they are platted as such. So if we just need to do a Hammerhead from the bottom and a Hammerhead from the top so that everybody has access to their property, we can't prevent them from having access.
Okay.
So I...
Jody, raise your hand.
Yes, Jody?
We don't have access to it now, and it just so...
Well, we do, it's just pretty crappy.
Yeah, it's not real, I don't think we could...
It's not acceptable.
It's not acceptable.
No.
Okay, so...
So is the consensus that we're gonna, that we're gonna do Skylake? We're gonna...
Question at our next meeting, so you can make a decision.
No, I, I think we keep it the way we are and that, that we see where, where we end up with how much money we have. And that it is a high priority, but, you know...
Yes, Mike?
Snowplow could be done according to standards. Not by taking out what is there, but by applying what might be good service according to the paper. We must, by the design, add-ons to the one there now. I understand it would cost maybe around six thousand dollars plus or minus, the asphalt. So I just mentioned that, that's a, it's a possibility, we're starting to run short of money, that, you know, wouldn't be according to our city standard. But it would provide a connection there on the city side, uh, in the middle or just on the street, the asphalt.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't have an engineer's approval.
Right, because I think...
I would think that that's one of the things that we need to look at when we come to this point where we're looking at, at, we know how big the, the bucket of money is, and we know what the priorities are. How far can we make that, that go? Uh, I, I, I'm personally not in a lot of favor of cutting corners on standards because we're just gonna have to come back in and fix it at some point.
Well, that's...
So, yeah, there's, there's a point with that too, is that...
Can we, can we address that for a minute?
That's what I wanted to address.
So, we had LEI, we had LEI look at it. They had CMT come in and do some test pits and some bore holes. Now, when they did the bore hole, they did a pile driver test. And so what they do is they drill a big hole...
You know what? I'm sorry to interrupt, but Dave Pratt is super passionate about this. We're gonna have to have you do this whole thing again when he's here. He's gonna want it, so let's, don't...
I think we should still discuss it though now.
Well, you can talk about, but I just, do you want to have the whole presentation, let's sit through it again in...
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm okay with that, because it's important, it's an important budget discussion that we have to have prior to our truth in taxation.
Okay, that's fine, I just know we're gonna do the whole thing again.
So, they do a bore hole.
One of the rest of us...
They went down sixteen feet total. They went down three feet, and then they do a pile driver test in the bottom of that hole. And, you know, I didn't watch him, but they do a pile driver test. Well, the pile driver test at three feet took twenty-six impacts to go a given distance. Then they did, then they drilled some more in this big hole, and they went down to nine feet, and they did another pile driver test. That test took forty-one impacts to go the same distance, okay? Then they got down to thirteen feet, and they did another test. Now we're into the original Bushnell Road. That, that pile driver test took six impacts to go the same distance. And then they did another one at sixteen feet, and that one took seven impacts to go the same distance as the one at forty-one and the one at, at twenty-six impacts. The, the engineer wants us to take the first two and scrape it off, and then rebuild it and bring back in structural fill. The heartburn I have with that is, you're never gonna get an engineer sign off on something that he can't prove. Okay? So you can either do a, a compaction test with a, with a nuclear test, you can do a visual, you can, and, and so, when we hauled all that material in, because we had to build the road up to, to get the sewer in, because the sewer was daylight, because the road dipped down too far. So we hauled all that material in. Now, the engineer, in order for him to sign off on it and to give us a one, a one-year warranty, we're gonna spend a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars to scrape off the top four feet, put down geofabric, screen that material, and then bring it back and compact it when we do, and do nuclear testing when we do, and then put in another layer geofabric and bring in the top, the top two feet. We're not doing any kind of testing like that on any of the other roads that we're doing in town.
None of our new roads have this, right?
I mean...
So that's the one thing I wanted to bring up is, is this, how many feet is that?
Hundred feet, hundred fifty.
A hundred feet to do...
About a hundred and fifty feet is our responsibility, the rest of it.
And spend two hundred thousand to do it that way. And we haven't been doing that on any of these new projects, these new road projects we have going through town. We're just doing them as part of our overall road project. But we're, we're not going back and, and doing the same testing or the same engineering. If we did that, we would not be able to replace any road in our city right now.
So...
And so, I think that it's a little bit overkill for, to do two hundred thousand for a hundred feet, when we just talked about doing Skylake over a thousand feet for maybe fifty thousand dollars.
So my, my concern is, I think there is a difference between the two. One is an existing road and one is a new road. One has a number of years of history in its, uh, in its compaction and, and how it works versus another one that is brand-new. And we don't have any history.
Which one are you talking about that's brand-new? Lofer?
Lofer. Lofer would be a brand-new road.
Well, again, the foundation is only because you can't prove that it was, that it was done to a high enough standard. But again, you do those pile driver tests, and the Bushnell Road at thirteen and sixteen feet, it's garbage compared to the top eleven feet. But we're okay with the Bushnell portion of it.
Well, and, and I, I struggle with that. I don't, I don't understand how you, how you build on, and, and there may be some magic formula here, but I don't understand how you build on a base that is substandard.
Spread.
Yeah.
All the roads in town are built up. Years, years ago when we did Woodland Hills Drive, we, we went up Woodland Hills Drive and, and did like sixty core samples. And the only thing the engineer came back and said was, your road's garbage. In order to do it right, you need to dig out eighteen inches, bring in twelve inches of structural fill, and then six inches of road base before you put asphalt back on top of it. What did we do? We ground it up, spread it out, compacted it, and put new asphalt on top, just like we are everything else. Why, why are we totally rebuilding West Lofer to the tune of sixty dollars a square foot? When it just, when we're not on anything else that we're currently doing?
Why, why are we requiring new homes to have a geo, uh, test when previous homes, old homes, didn't have it either? Why, why are we adding that new requirement?
Well, and we're finding that the, the avalanche, or not the avalanche, but the earthquake, um, extent is further than ever imagined.
So, so the reason that we're doing it is because we've learned and because we know that, uh, what, what, well, one, the state's requiring it, and two, we've learned that, that we have problems. Aren't we, don't we want to do the same thing with West Lofer, that we're learning that we have potential problems?
Okay, what about Broad Hollow and Spring and Skylake and Settlement and, and every other road that we're doing right now too?
My, my, my separation point is, one is an existing road that has history, another one is a road that, that has no history.
But it, it doesn't have good history.
It has more history than West Lofer has.
Look at Woodland Hills Drive. We just, we just put down a brand-new road in 2014, and it's already fallen apart. The only thing that's saving us on Woodland Hills Drive is you've got curbing on both sides that keeps the asphalt from migrating out. All you've done is contained it, that's why it's called a containment curve. But it's falling apart. I mean, the alligatoring that's taken place...
And so, and so, I'm not saying that we, we need to do it to the new standard. What I'm saying is that we look at what our options are when we know how, how much money we have. That's what I'm saying that we need to do. And I think that, that part of that is we look at all of our options. That we, do we understand the cause and effect, we understand the risks, we understand, uh, you know, with the, the benefit of cutting a corner? But we don't do it just because we haven't done it someplace else.
I think that part of this discussion is we're going into a truth and taxation. We're, we're explaining this, that we're spending money on roads and water, infrastructure costs. Our, all the roads we're doing in the road project currently, we're doing for one sixty to maybe one thirty a square foot for these road projects. We're, we're doing them, they're, they're good, they're, I mean, Ted is, is overseeing a lot of that. They're, they're good, and, and we're spending a lot of money on those. But we are not going to the extent, the West Lofer Road is now at sixty dollars a square foot compared to a dollar twenty, a dollar sixty to two dollars and twenty-five cents a square foot. And that is a significant budgetary item that I think that we should consider. If those impacts on those core tests can go down to the stuff that's been putting, been put on top at that sixty, what did you say, sixty-one?
Pile driver test.
Yeah, the pile driver test compared to some of the others. I, I mean, if we're going to be fair to our residents who are paying this, are they gonna come back and say, how come you only, how come you only did this for my road and you did this for this one hundred feet of road? And it's my tax dollars paying for all of the roads? So I think it's a, it's a worthy discussion to have.
I'll, I'll, I'll make my statement again. I'm not saying that we need to do it either way. I'm saying that we need to look at and explore all of the ways.
Part, part of the problem is we've got Geneva coming into town to, to do roads. Are we gonna tell them to do Skylake? Because they'll be here before your next meeting.
So...
You're, you're looking, you're looking at a pot of money. The leftover from the road bond is what has been earmarked for West Lofer.
So then what, what you're saying is we need to change our, our, our guideline that we created early on, that we said that we were gonna wait to do Lofer until we knew how big the bucket of money was?
Well, what's left over. So every time, every time we run into a problem on the water project, you've got to change order.
That's right.
Every time you add a new section of road like Skylake, your, your, your change orders are all eaten at that leftover pot of money.
Okay.
And so that pot of money grows because we get a, we get, I mean, the Geneva bids came in a hundred, Ted, was it a hundred thousand? The Geneva bid came in a hundred thousand less than what we anticipated. So that pot of money that was left over grew by a hundred thousand dollars just because Geneva gave us a better price on the roads. Well, now we're gonna take, you know...
Half a thousand?
Fifty thousand of that increase, we're gonna take fifty thousand out of that pot to do Skylake. We're gonna take, you know, whatever to do change orders and to fix issues, you know, so, but...
So I'll ask the question again. Do we want to change our guidance on when we're going to decide whether or not we're gonna do these other roads? And that includes West Lofer, that includes Skylake, it includes all of the roads that, that aren't already in the, in the system?
You have to. E- either that or we just stay the course and we don't do Skylake.
Ted? Help me understand, because you're the one that, that brought up the issue and reminded us that we had this guidance that said we're going to, um, we wanna, we wanna wait and see how much money we have so that we don't overcommit to, um, to, to some of these other projects when we have roads that aren't done with, um, with, uh, new pipes in them.
Yeah, so, and I, I track these numbers pretty closely, and I don't have them in front of me tonight because I wasn't really prepared to go in deep into numbers. But the, so, let me kind of just step back. When we put this road project out, the idea was that we wanted to repave all the roads that were being impacted by the water lines, right? And when we talk about repave, we're doing the polarizer repave, which is a, um, not a rebuild, but it gives you a little bit longer life out of the road. So, that was the, the goal behind using the road... So that was the, the goal behind using the road bond money was to redo all these roads with the water line project. And when we estimated it, we estimated it at a cost that Vancon gave us when they were going to do the roads. But we put it out to bid, to everybody to bid, well, we got a price that was, uh, instead of two twenty-five a square foot, it came in an average of a hundred and, or excuse me, about a dollar sixty a square foot. So roughly our, our, our estimate was around four hundred thousand, it actually came in at about three hundred thousand. Now, so we, we did, as, as Corbett mentioned, we did come in about a hundred thousand under what we had, um, expected it to come in at. Now with that, the longer version of this story is that a portion of Vancon's contract, because they've done extra work in their contract for water line, we're taking one of the streets out of their contract that was a pulverizer pave and putting it in Geneva's contract. So instead of Geneva's contract being three hundred thousand, it's going to be three hundred seventy thousand. Now, this is actually a benefit to the city because now instead of doing that road for two twenty-five square foot, we're doing it for a dollar sixty-five a square foot. We're actually saving some money. But it takes more money out of the road bond money, but freed us up a little money in the water project to do some of the water stuff. So now our road bond, and I think when I looked at this the other day, it was around the road bond money that's being spent in Geneva's contract is three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. So that's kind of where we're at with the road bond money right now. And our original estimate, when we estimated the road project was about four hundred thousand. So we're still under the estimate, um, but we're higher than the original bid. So by adding Skylake in, um, depending on how much of Skylake we done, then you would be looking at a total road project cost of somewhere between four hundred and four hundred and twenty thousand, depending on whether we did six hundred feet Skylake or the entire thousand feet Skylake or whatever that is. So you're kind of getting back where the original engineer's estimate is. However, like you mentioned, Bob, um, Skylake was never really part of the road project when we originally put it out to bid. So it is a, a change order to Geneva. But, you know, potentially while Geneva's doing Broad Hollow, they do Sky, and Spring, they do Skylake, we get it for say a dollar sixty-five a square foot. Um, because they're already mobilized on the site, there's probably a little advantage to having them do it while you're there, if we want them to do it. Now, it's not up to me to decide how we spend the money. I'm just giving you the dollars and we'll let the council decide how you want to spend it, but, um, so there are some advantages to doing it, but while you're there, but once again, it is money that is a change to the original project.
So it sounds like to me what we need to do is send this back to, to Mark and his team and have them say, okay, prioritize these roads and tell us what our new guidance should be.
But will that, um, will that take too much time for when Geneva starts doing, um, Broad Hollow? Because they're, they, once the, the contract has been awarded, they get to choose which road goes first, second, third. We don't get to choose. So if, if we're, if we're going to take time because road committee is only meeting once a month and then we, this is going to happen before our next meeting, I think that it, we're missing an opportunity to do something. At a, at a, at one, one dollar and sixty cents a square foot, we're not going to get that again. We're not.
Yeah, no, that is kind of a poor point. I think Geneva's planning on starting towards the end of this month.
Mark, are you still there?
I'm still here, I'm just waiting for a chance to chime in.
Would you chime in please?
Okay, here, here's the thing, as Ted had just mentioned, you know, we, we spent a, a lot of our bond money on the, you know, the roads over the top of the water line. And we're looking at what, you know, this is something I talked about about a month ago, is we really need to see how much money we have left before we actually decide how much we can do on West Lofer. Uh, but, you know, if we end up trying to do the, you know, re-escalate the road and everything and do the, doing the six, sixty dollar per, or six hundred dollar, yeah, sixty dollar per foot option, you know, we're not going to have enough money to do West Lofer regardless. Uh, we, right now, we're looking without doing, uh, Skylake, we, we probably got someplace between two hundred and two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to work with using the existing bond money that's left over at, and, and the money. And that's just a rough estimate from, from talking with Chris. So we still don't know exactly how much money we're going to have, but let's just call it two hundred thousand plus or minus to complete West Lofer. If we end up doing, uh, Skylake, depending on how much of Skylake, that's going to take out of that two hundred thousand, uh, as, as Ted had mentioned, and it's going to leave us with, you know, someplace, you know, well, say a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred thousand. Again, I'm just throwing numbers out there. You know, depending on the level of improvement we make on West Lofer, when I say we make the, the, whatever the council decides to do, you know, even, you know, if we just do the minimum, we're going to be close to that two hundred thousand dollars, you know, but if we just throw it, uh, uh, an overlay on it and guardrails, we're going to be close to that. If we start doing more, we're getting more and more expensive. So what I'm seeing right now without, we have a meeting and, and we can discuss it more and meet with the engineers, but it's, it's ultimately how, at what level do we want to improve the, uh, the West Lofer Road? That's a decision you guys have to make. And, you know, if we decide to do, you know, the full improvements, you know, we're talking about a whole lot more money than we're going to have regardless of whether we do a Skylake or not. Or if we decide to do something at a lower level, then we have to decide just how much lower level do we want to expend on that road so that we have enough money to even complete it, let alone complete it and Skylake. A concern I have with just the lower level is as soon as we do it at a lower level and then we come back and we ask our developers to do it at our standard level, they're going to come back to us and say, well, why are we being forced to do something you guys aren't willing to do yourself? I just wanted to bring that up.
So, so that brings up a good point. So what standard will we require Summit Creek to do their portion of West Lofer? The substandard or the city standard?
Or, or other roads in the future, not just, just not West Lofer standard, but any roads we add going, from here going forward.
Setting a, setting a, a, a new standard is what we're doing.
Well, but it's, it's all about liability. I mean, I'm going to do a road and I'm taking responsibility for that road. I mean, the city does a road and the city takes responsibility for that road. Okay? We take care of all the maintenance, we take care of replacement, we take care of treatments. Um, developer does a road and the developer's expecting us to take responsibility for it.
But we're expecting them to build to our standard. We're expecting, okay, rephrase that. We're expecting them to build to the standard they committed to. And.
Is that?
Isn't that our, isn't that the city standard?
Yeah, yeah, but.
That's right. And, and, and we do that for a variety of reasons. And one is so that we can, uh, so that we have a good base to build on in the future and to do repairs against and to minimize repairs, right? And so if we, if we are creating a collateral, I don't know what the right word is, if we're creating a, a, uh, undocumented standard, what, what's to say, they're coming back to us and say, well, we, you did this road it that way, why not do all of these other roads that we want to develop? And do, do we then have anything to push back on that?
They can do that now. Well, we do that on every single road that we resurface.
That's the city. That's not the developer's option. That's the city.
So West, West Lofer is a city road too.
So, so Mark, how long would it take you guys to come back and give the council a recommendation on what to do with these two or three roads?
I, I, I'm not even sure how to answer that question. I, I mean, it's, uh, it's a matter of how much money do we have? That would be first off something we're going to need to know is how much money do we have to work with? It's hard to make a recommendation without knowing the, uh, financial result of that recommendation. I think it's something we would need to know. But, uh, at the same time, you know, we've, we've kind of put West Lofer, I mean, the council already approved the, the roads that we're, we're doing now minus, uh, minus Skylake, excuse me, and then we were going to look forward to see what, use the rest of the money to, to finish West Lofer. That's what the council has approved, uh, what, at a meeting about a month ago. So that's where we're at. So I mean, it would also take a, a council motion to, to change that at this point because the council already agreed to do, do it the way we're currently doing it. So if we wanted to change it, you guys would need to make a, make a recommendation to make that change. Uh, honestly, I just, you know, personally, you know, I, I think, uh, what am I, how am I saying this? I think Corbett and I have a little bit of a disagreement on that. I personally do not think we're going to have enough money left over to complete West Lofer. That's my personal, but I'm not that close to the numbers as, as city staff is. I'm just looking at it from, you know, twenty thousand feet. Uh, Corbett, Chris, and everybody else are a lot closer to that than I am, but I just don't see us having enough money to complete West Lofer, uh, the way it needs to be completed unless we do something very substandard. Uh, so at this point, you know, I also have to agree with, with, um, Skylake, if we're going to do Skylake, we probably need to do it while we're up there finishing off the top of Broad Hollow and Settlement. And I, I have driven that road as, uh, Corbett requested and it's pretty chewed up. It, it really is bad.
Addition, Mark, um, I mean, as, as I'm looking at it and as what Ted just said, if we, we currently just saved in the last week with the contract with Geneva a hundred thousand dollars that we weren't expecting to save, and so by, to me, using half of that savings to do Skylake, would, is not taking away from West Lofer because it's not money that was even, we even anticipated last week. I mean, that is, I mean, is that right?
But we're also to have other change orders in the, in the thing. We've had like, for example, um, I maybe Ted can clip, speak to this a little bit better, but there's some other change orders over and above the, the road. There's some change orders that we're going to get from, uh, uh, Vancon for, for some piping and stuff like that, that need to be calculated into all the, all the final numbers as far as how much money we're going to have left over to spend.
Yeah, that all comes out of the water funds, not the road bond. Um, so the Vancon money will come out of our water bond that we have with the state and so that, which is a separate than the road bond money.
So. Oh, sorry, Ted.
Oh, I was just going to say, I mean, I think the reality is, I mean, I think West Lofer, I mean, we're going to have roughly, and I don't like, like Mark, I don't know what our, what our road bond budget is right now, I don't know what funds we have. I've heard like Mark a number. So these estimates are, you know, we're going to have somewhere around two hundred and thirty thousand remaining after we do the Geneva project, assuming there's no change orders to Geneva, which I'm not expecting a lot because there's just pretty straightforward work. You know, we spent fifty thousand on Skylake. Now we're instead of two hundred and thirty, we're a hundred and eighty thousand remaining to do West Lofer. I mean, that's what we're kind of talking about and it sounds like to me West Lofer, I, I might have a little different opinion. I, I, I think if you're going to do a road, and, and this is where, where I might get Corbett mad at me, I, I would say do it right if we're going to be tying into a development and Summit Creek's going to do a portion of that road and they're going to be doing the road to the city standard, then that whole road needs to be done to that, which I don't see us having enough budget, like Mark said, to do with the remaining road bonds. So I think it's going to take some, uh, a longer period to get that funds available to do what needs to be done on that road, whether that's added to the road bond money or we wait a little longer and collect more road bond money. I think that's up to the city council.
Okay, so for this Skylake change that we want to make, um, we can't really take any action tonight because it's, it's not agenda'd. So, um, if it indeed can't wait till the next meeting, then we'd have to call a special meeting anyway.
Things probably, probably going to have to happen if we want to take advantage of them doing it while they're there, because I think they're planning to start the end of this month and they're only going to be on Broad Hollow, Spring and Settlement probably for a couple, three weeks and then they'll be moving down to Lakeview and Valleyview in that area. So if we want them to take advantage of it up there, I think it's, it's going to have to be probably a.
Ted, Ted wouldn't, I mean, if I remember correctly, yes, we do, I mean, this isn't saying we don't want to do West Lofer, but it, it appeared to me that when we were talking about doing this before, we were hoping that, that, um, that Summit Creek would be doing their half and it would all happen at the same time, but have we heard that Summit Creek is even ready or willing to do?
They're waiting on us.
Their side, they're just waiting to, for us.
As I understand, in our last conversation with them, they're waiting on us.
Okay.
They'll follow our lead.
We're all ready at the same time.
And so what I'm saying is that it's questionable if we have enough funds to do West Lofer in and of itself. And so let's just go ahead and do Skylake, which then almost a hundred percent puts a, a nail in the coffin against West Lofer. And so West Lofer stays undone.
Not necessarily.
I don't think it's a, it's a nail in the coffin.
So can I speak to that? You're saying that with, with two hundred and thirty dollars, you might have enough money to do West Lofer. But we're going to take out fifty thousand and to do Skylake. And so how, how can we take fifty thousand out when we don't, when we're questioning whether we have enough to do it with the fifty thousand? How does taking the fifty thousand out not put a nail in the coffin?
Because all of the estimates so far are just off of the engineer's recommendation. So one of the things the engineer wants us to do is he wants us to dig out, take the top four feet off and stockpile it and screen it. Well, why? Why do that? So one of the things that we've done in this, in this newest design is we've extended the culvert on the Mick Hillside, and I don't know if that's west or south or whatever.
Yeah.
But if we extend that culvert forty feet, I've already talked to the property owner and the property owner is okay with that, as long as we don't take out any trees. I don't think we'll need to. So instead of taking all that material, the top four feet and hauling it off and screening it and then bringing it, bringing it back, just scrape it off and, and fill the shoulder of the road. Now, UDOT standard says if you've got a, you need a four to one slope to be a recoverable slope. If you have less than a four to one, then you got to do guard rail or K-rail or something. So if we, if we extend that culvert forty feet and we take the top four feet and we scrape it off and we just use it to build the shoulder of the road, we don't have to test it because the only part that has to be tested and meet a criteria is the platform for the road. So we scrape it off, we build up the shoulder of the road, we get a four to one, we don't have to put guard rail on that side. There we've saved some money. If we bring in structural fill, it's cheaper to bring in structural fill, to put, put down fabric like the engineer wants, bring in structural fill, build it up two feet, compact it, do all the testing, put in another layer of geofabric, bring in another two feet, we can build that road cheaper, but we've not gone down that road. All we've done is looked at what the engineer wants us to do and that's hauling off the top four feet, screening it, stockpiling it, screening it, and then bringing it back. That's a lot more labor intensive than just scraping it off. So I, I still think.
What would prevent us from doing that?
Nothing. We've just, we've just not.
What would be the downside?
We've just not gone down that road.
Why not?
Time? That's all.
You mean, when you say we've not gone down that road?
To figure.
Because we're talking, talking about a road, what your meaning is, we haven't gone that direction.
We haven't gone down that path.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're all clear on what that means.
But we've not, we've not done a cost analysis to do it, to look at it that way. All we've done is we, we've based everything off of the original bid from Ted Home that was based on the original engineer's recommendation and that's all we're going on.
So we're just shooting in the dark?
No, we've got a pretty educated guess for the one option that we've looked at and that's it.
But, but, but what we're saying, the one option that we've looked at, we can't afford.
Most likely not.
Okay, and so, so then that leaves us shooting in the dark on option two. That's my take.
For now, but, yeah, I mean, you can pursue that, investigate and see what it's going to cost you.
So if I, if I, being a member of that committee, um, it seems to me, I know we're in a hurry, but we've got some really qualified, Corbett's opinion, we've got some really qualified people in that committee.
Like Mark?
Like Mark and like Ted's been on it now, he's walked away now, but I'd like to, I'd like to get into that group and say, okay, let's start to investigate, you know.
Yeah.
As quickly as we can and get some advice, um, so we have an educated. So we have an educated
Hey, a couple of things.
I'm hearing that we don't have time to do that. We've got to make a decision tonight.
Well, we can't make a decision tonight.
But you've alr-, you've already decided that you don't have enough money to do West Loafer, and it makes more sense to do Skylake. Right now, to me, the only decision that needs, that needs to be made is whether or not you do Skylake while Geneva's there. We're not going to do anything with West Loafer until we're done with all the other projects anyways, and we figure out how much money we got left over.
So Ted, Ted asking you the question then, I mean, is it either or in your mind? Or is it that we could beneficial, I mean, it could be financially benefit, uh, beneficial for the city to do Skylake? And then, um, still continue that, that discussion of, of West Loafer and the committee looking at all the options, et cetera, and still have that opportunity? I mean, it doesn't seem to me that it's a nail in the coffin on West Loafer. It just means that we would have to maybe come up with some additional funding anyways because we don't have any firm numbers for West Loafer until all the other projects are finished, which would then be too late to even add in this.
Yeah, and what I, what I might suggest as a thought for the council is that we've got a couple of weeks anyway, right? And to approve West Loafer, or excuse me, Skylake, to approve Skylake is going to take some board, or some council action on an emergency board meeting. What I can suggest is we go back to the engineer, look at this option. I don't think it would take him, you know, even the full two weeks to put together a, a cost of this other option that Corbett talks about. Cause then we've got good information at our hands. We know how much roughly it's going to cost. We pretty much have a good idea how much it's going to cost to do Skylake. Cause we already have their number. Let's spend two weeks and get a cost for, West Loafer to do this option that Corbett talks about. And then if we come back and re-prioritize, that's going to take some emergent, an emergency council meeting, and we'll have those numbers at hand and can make an educated decision on the best approach.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I think that's what Paul's suggesting. That's kind of what I think I'm suggesting, and, and so I-
I, I'm good with that.
I think, I think we, we have to have data to make a decision.
Hey, can I chime in one more time here on this?
Please.
Okay, so I, I'm a hundred percent supportive of what Corbett just suggested doing. Uh, that's part of, uh, that, that, you know, it, it satisfies the, the fill zone. I'm still concerned, uh, that we won't have enough money to do it even, you know, even if we chop the price in half by doing it that way, that's still going to leave us way short of being able to complete West Loafer. So that, that is my biggest concern. So I'm kind of along the lines with, uh, with Corbett and Ted at this point, you know, let's go ahead and since we're need to finish, uh, Broad Hall, or not Broad Hall, but Skylake, because it really needs to be done, and we probably ought to do that. And, but knowing that, you know, we, that's me with going under again, an assumption, and we know how risky that can be, that no matter what, whether we choose to do Skylake or not to do Skylake, we still not have enough money to do West Loafer. That's, that's the approach I'm taking at this point. Uh, and again, I, I don't have the full numbers on that, but I can just, you know, I can just see the cost being considerably more than the money we're going to have left over regardless of whether or not we do Skylake or not. So I, I, I kind of agree that we can probably do Skylake, uh, and then move on to West Loafer, but it would, it would really hurt. And as the mayor said earlier, uh, Dave is really, really passionate about, uh, West Loafer, and we would have a whole new dynamic to this discussion if he was in the meeting tonight.
Okay, so because we can't take any action tonight, and we do want some more information, let's task our committee to come back with, get us some more information. And then if we need to hold a special meeting, we'll call one.
And do I, do you guys want me to call a special Public Works Committee meeting on this and talk about it, or do we want to just go ahead and, and short the, uh, committee out and just go straight through council? And another thing I, I would like to point out is we have a, we have a, a traffic design engineer on our committee that has probably been left out of the loop in all of these discussions. It may not be a bad idea to bring him in on it.
To me, to me, the question is, what kind of information can we get before that meeting? Cause we've got to have good information if we're going to make good decisions on that. If we can't get good information, I think that the meeting might be speculation.
And, and one more quick suggestion, we could have a combination road committee or Public Works Committee, Council Committee, Council Meeting at the same time to where, you know, the council would make the decision, but the committee could help with the decision-making process by making a recommendation. Do that once instead of twice.
What I suggest, Paul, by way of information, is task or give Corbett permission to get with LEI, talk about this option and put some cost to it, this option two, we'll call it, for the road. Put some numbers to it. I don't think it's going to, well, I, I shouldn't take them too long to put some numbers to that option. Um, even if they're ballpark-ish, at least that gives us an idea of where it's at. So we know that if spending fifty thousand on Skylake is a deal killer, we'll have that information. If it's not, then great. Or if it's just going to take more work and we need to spend more time on West Loafer, then we'll know that too. But I think if we can task Corbett with just giving it, you know, or have him task LEI with just coming up with a cost of this option, at least we've got the information at hand to make that educated decision. And so I, I would suggest that would be the task, was have Corbett describe this option to LEI and have them put together a cost to do that hundred feet of road for that option.
Yeah, I, I think that's good.
Can, can I be clear? I'm not against finishing West Loafer.
Right.
I just, I just want to get as much done as we can, including Skylake, including whatever else. And I just hate to see us spend that much money on, on a lousy hundred and fifty feet of road when we can do so much more with that same amount of money. Unless, unless we can find a cheaper way to do West Loafer and still get done what needs to be done.
So my, I'm not opposed to looking at additional options. Okay? I think that we need to have data to make the decision, and I'm sure that Dave Pratt would say, we have kicked West Loafer down the road for years and years and years. And, and what we're talking about is kicking it down there again. And is that the right thing to do? How many years have we looked at doing West Loafer and, and we haven't?
Well, but realize too, we didn't tear up West Loafer until twenty sixteen. It's not been years and years and years. We did the sewer in twenty sixteen. That's when we tore up West Loafer. It's, it, it was paved as far as, it was paved as far as we're going to pave it now.
So when you, but, so you're living in a house and somebody came and tore up the whole road in front of your house, and now five years later, it's still sitting, torn up. So, I mean, it has been near, it, I mean, I'm sure the first people living there feel like it's been years and years.
That's right. The new guy's only been there a month.
Not have, yeah. But to just not have a road in front of your house that was there when you bought the home.
But I would like you all to go and drive on, on, on Skylake.
Right.
Cause it doesn't even look like there's a road either.
I've been there a couple of times.
Yep, I've been.
One, one other thing on-
Go ahead, Mark.
We also have, we also discussed, uh, a couple of months back, the, uh, the liability of not having that road completed. Uh, there was this discussion about our city code requires anything over a thousand feet to be a, a through street, which we are not meeting that requirement for Northview and, and probably West Loafer, and I forget the other little cul-de-sac in there as it is right now. So there's also the liability that we are up against by not completing West Loafer. I just, uh, you know, there's, there's a lot of things to talk about.
Like Broad Hollow? Because Broad Hollow is a dead end. As soon as you pass settlement, it's a dead end all the way to the hammerhead at the end. That's got it.
Yep.
So that's against our city code too.
So we've got, you know, so I just, you know, that's a tough one. So just to be clear, we, you want to go ahead and move forward without a, without a Public Works Committee meeting on this? Is that, is that what I understand?
I think we, we, let's, let's wait to see if we can find out for LEI our work schedule. How's that?
And can we do that?
Okay.
The, this public works meeting and the city council meeting in the next two weeks, as Ted suggested, so that we can have a decision prior to them, um, on those roads repaving. That's the only deadline I-
I'm out of town, uh, starting tomorrow until at least Monday, probably Tuesday of next week anyway. And so if, uh, what I was suggesting is if we want to have the Public Works Committee involved in this, uh, can we do it as a joint meeting with the council?
Yes.
And we will have the information, I'm sure, before next Monday or Tuesday anyway. So let's see what happens when we get that information.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah. Well, we don't have a meeting in two weeks from now. So that's why we need to have a special meeting. Because we don't have it because of the holiday. So if we had a special meeting that just dealt with this and nothing else, I think we could get it taken care of.
Right, uh, moving on. Corbett, do you have anything for us on security at the water tank?
No, I mean, everybody should have got that, that quote I got from Geneva Communications. I just haven't heard anything from anybody. I don't know where we're at as far as security. Right now, we have no security at the tanks.
I have a question.
We, that's, we do have a lock.
We have a padlock.
I don't know. I, I didn't know where we were. I, the only reason I asked, Jody put it on there, because I had no idea where we were at. And I just, I'm, I'm just trying to keep track.
I have a question though. Um, I know we approved fifty thousand dollars last, um, council meeting. And in my opinion, we were doing the bid that David gave us for the thirty thousand for the cameras that would be for fire department. And then I thought we were doing the additional for the cameras that Corbett was talking about that would be separate and for the water system. And I'm okay with having two separate systems because, let me finish. Because the fire cameras will be looking up the hill for fire and, and around, but they do not, they are not, at least in far as my investigation, are not focused at the water tank specifically. And to me, it seems that we have two entities that need protected. Our fire, which is huge for protection for public safety, but also our water system needs to be protected. And right now, a padlock on a gate is not a really good, a good protection because if we have a violation, we have to shut down and go on a boil order like we did last time. So to me, if one camera system goes down for whatever reason, we should have the second camera system there that is not, they're not connected, and I'm okay with doing that. And we've approved this fifty thousand. David gave us the bid of thirty. I think the other twenty, we need to really look at cameras for the water system, uh, making sure it's secure.
So the, the thirty thousand dollars was to pay for the, the cameras. The twenty thousand dollars was contingent because we didn't know what the software was going to cost to make it a proactive system instead of just a reactive system. And so it was, the fifty was all for the same system. And it, one was for hardware and one was for software.
So we will have to come back then and have another discussion on the one that Corbett's asking us for and find additional money.
So I thought, no, we- between the thirty thousand-
We don't have to do it that way.
That he, that he asked for because we weren't going to go up to fifty last week. We would have only voted on the thirty. I, I would have only voted on the thirty had I, if that was the, if that was the case. So I feel that I wasn't adequately, um, that, that was inadequately said. Uh, Paul, what are you saying? We can't hear you very good.
Is this any better?
Yes.
Let me get closer to some wifi here. So Corbett and I had a good conversation with Geneva a couple of weeks ago. Corbett, I still haven't seen any, any responses to any of the questions they promised to get me uh, you know, three Fridays ago. Um, so I was just kind of waiting for that so we could compare some things, but the, we, Carrie, we have about three or four different systems that need to go in. So we've got things that the fire department's using, we've got security, and we've got the water tanks. If we start separating the system, and I've talked to Dave about this, I wish he was on the call because he's very, um, he's got an opinion on this. If we start splitting the systems up, then we got to learn two systems and tie them together. This, this Geneva system won't tie into our current system, and our system won't tie into the Geneva system. It's two different languages. So the last I talked to Dave, he still wants to keep it all one system. I think before any decision, well, like you said, Carrie, the decision's already been made, but Corbett had brought these other options, so the finance committee and others were going to look at that just to double check to make sure that it was something that would have worked or not worked for what the goals were.
All right. I just want to make sure that we have, I just want to make sure that our system, whatever we end up doing, has a component that's fire only and water only, even if it's the same system, because I think that that's, those are two public safety issues. One that's controlled with, with Craig and one that's controlled with, with Corbett, because I don't want us to get, we might be safe from fire because we have this great fire department, but if somebody i- infiltrates our water system, that's just as much of a public safety issue, I feel. So I want to make sure.
The, the, one of the, the advantages of having a single system or a system that talks to each other is that if you have one camera go down, you still have the other cameras up and running. If you have to, uh, typically when you have multiple systems that don't talk together, you may be able to purchase it cheaper, but it's going to cost you a lot more to maintain it. And so we need to have just one system, and the system all needs to work together in harmony, and the system needs to have the built-in redundancies that if one camera goes down, the others are still up.
That makes sense.
And so it's neither fire nor water, it is security.
So are we saying then, um, um, Chris, that the fifty thousand that we authorized last meeting could cover both fire and water?
It could cover the security Cameron needs for the city, all the needs, including the park, the water tanks, the city center, the mailboxes. It, it does cover all those. It does have facial recognition. It will text out, call or email if there's somebody up there. Um, uh, excuse me, it has person recognition, but it also has facial recognition. So it can recognize if Corbett's up there, it can recognize if I'm up there, Craig or whoever, and not send out messages and, or send out false alarms. Um, I believe the Geneva system also had that feature.
That's not the Geneva one you're talking about.
No, I, no, I didn't, no, this is the IVMS, the current system we have. I just, actually, while you guys were talking about the roads, I was on with Ryan, just double checking everything, and he just told me those exact specs.
Right. Can I ask Corbett then, Corbett, do you feel that this is, is, um, adequate for fire?
As long, as long as we have something that's proactive at the tanks, I don't know. I just-
So we have to take her, they have to take her to emergency room?
Even though it's the same system, yeah.
Okay. I just want to-
And I do want your learning. That's important.
You could look at each other's cameras.
And, and I think that this initial bid we got that was most fire cameras really, Corbett wasn't really involved because we weren't talking about tanks. So we want to make sure whatever we do for water, he's definitely in that loop.
Yeah, I think that would be important.
That, that particularly because of the placement and functionality of cameras at different locations.
Is it, is this fifty thousand still only for the six cameras or would, when we went, because that's what it was at thirty, so now are we expanding that a little bit to cover the water tanks? Chris?
So my recollection is it's more than six cameras. It also includes the back halls because you somehow got to get the, the signal back to a central computer or the internet to, to capture all the video. And so it includes all that, includes the installation and all the setup and everything. But one of the keys we got to, so Corbett's bid, if I remember right, Corbett, correct me if I'm wrong, it only covers the water area. It didn't have any inclusion for anywhere else in the city. They don't have the ability, at least they didn't think so on the last conference call we had, to do point to zoom cameras or some of those kind of things. And like you said, there's no integration between either system. And that, that, I believe is a little bit of a concern. They have two different security type systems.
Yeah, Geneva's, Geneva, Geneva does not do PTZ cameras. So, and, and I don't remember any of that stuff.
Long as we have security at the water tank, I'm good.
So, so for one, one concern I have with Geneva is that they still have not responded to our questions. And it seemed like only one guy in the whole company could answer any of our questions that day. And he was up in Idaho. And that makes me a little concerned. And that makes me a little concerned just because of the depth of the company. But, but I, I could be wrong, but I haven't seen any communication from them for about three or four weeks.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I can send you, I mean, I don't, again, I don't know that it matters. I'm not, I'm not sold on Geneva. They were just a, they were just another guy that called and wanted to give a proposal.
Okay, they still are ringing, or their name and hat.
No, yeah.
All right.
Can I hit another Public Works issue?
Yes.
Power to the tanks. So we've been, I've, I've talked a lot about using the old water lines to the tanks for something. Well, we used one of them for conduit for communications. And that's, that's how we're hopefully getting fiber to the tanks. Is T-Mobile or Ray, T-Mobile was response, CenturyLink would not run conduit to the tank. So T-Mobile had to get the conduit to the tank. So we worked out a deal where T-Mobile pulled the, pulled interduct in the water line. And they pulled three interducts and two of them, and gave two of them to us. So I got those two interducts extended from where they put it into a box up at the tanks over to the, the wellhouse. And then from the wellhouse, we can get them over to the, to the shack and to the, to the tower. The transformer that runs the well is leaking oil. And according to SESD, it's overheating. Is it because of the, the weather that we've had? They're concerned that we're overloading that, that transformer. They want us to run three-phase power to the tanks. So with everything that we've been doing with Vancon and we tore up the top of Broad Hollow, I've exposed the other water line to the tank and started pushing conduit in it. Under, I mean, under the mayor's approval, we bought the conduit. We're extending that. But just down the road, we're going to probably see having to take three-phase power to the tanks. Just so everybody's aware. Well, I mean, Vancon's, Vancon quoted us $43,000 to get it to the tanks. And, and we're going to do it for 10? That, no, that's just to get the conduit to the tanks. And, but we're going to use the old water line. We are using the old water line. We'll do it for the cost of the conduit and a little bit of labor.
Then who puts the wire in?
SESD.
And what does that cost, I think?
I, I, I don't know. And we haven't, we haven't got that far yet. We got the conduit, got everything, got the old pipe exposed, cut it up, got conduit in the ground where we could, where we had to, to get, to get it in while Geneva, or while Vancon had the trenches open. But, I mean.
So basically, we can see it's coming sooner here.
Yes.
And so Corbett's done a really good job of seeing that and getting us posed to be able to do it as economically as possible.
Yep. Do we need to put something formally? Or if some other cell phone company comes up there and they want three-phase power or anything like that, can we get some reimbursements from these guys to use that? Or is there, is there going to be enough to share?
Oh, I would think so. I mean, it'd be, it'd be no different than an offsite, an offsite improvement. So yeah, if anybody else uses it, we should be able to, to tag portion of the cost of getting it there.
Yeah, so let's. Let's look into putting that policy into place. Anything else, Corbett? Thank you. Yes. I, I think so. I don't, I don't think we need you for any of our, well, we're going to need you to approve the minutes. All right, thank you very much. You're awesome. Right, update on council reports. Doral, CWPP.
All right. I'll flip this around so you can look at this picture. I sent you each a copy of it. We went to the top of the switchbacks and put a sign up there that says, "Don't build campfires here."
Yes.
And if you look closely at that picture, you can see where a campfire used to be. And we don't want fires at the top of there. So, so I went up three or four days after the sign was placed and it was still there. And I was shocked.
Wow.
So anyway, that's, that's been done. Just want you to be aware of that.
Craig and I were, were talking about how he always has to order two signs because the first one's going to get stolen right away. So he's thinking about putting on there, what was it? Sign stolen from the city of Golden Hills or something on it? So that all those parents, when they see that.
It's hanging in my bedroom. You can find out where.
I don't know where they got it from. But I think it's very, very important because we've been getting a lot of calls about, about these campfires on the switchback trails.
You are way better than I thought you were.
And so I think this is, this will be really helpful. Even though we have something at the beginning of the trail, that's when they're just whizzing on by on their, on their ATVs. So, or they're side by side. So by having it at the top, at the top, it really stands out.
Yes.
So thank you.
And that's where they camp too, up in that area. So they like to have a fire, you know?
Great.
All right, kids do.
Doral?
Okay, the second thing regarding CWPP. We're trying to manage this grant in the best way possible to get the, the wood chipped that needs to be chipped in the city. There are two choices to find wood to chip, from city property or from private properties. This grant will cover half of the cost of a private property. And so we are interested in finding citizens who want to participate, where we would, they would come in and get a couple of bids. And, and we would prioritize the list of people who want the work done. And, and the city would decide which ones we worked on. Well, just the process of getting all of this done is a lot of work. Just trying to track it and, and, and to, to trace it all the way through to the final chipping day. So we're probably going to, going to come up with some paperwork and, and figure out how to get this offer to the citizens and to spend the grant in the most efficient manner. Again, if we chip city property, the grant covers it 100%. So, so just be aware of that. And I think that's all I have as far as CWPP.
Paul, animal shelter.
Not long, they've got that issue I talked about last night, or the time before, with the activist group on issuing mutilation of animals. That's not going away. It's gaining some, they've got some energy. So the, the government side or the animal shelter side are kind of gearing up for a bigger battle. We could be getting information out. So I expect we'll get information from both sides to be able to evaluate that. So I, I suspect that things will get maybe a little more heated in the next six months. It will have something more to look at.
Wow, okay. Okay, Utah Lake, Carrie?
Something today.
There is an algae bloom at Lincoln Beach. There, but, you know, the one thing about algae blooms, they, they, they're like the perfect storm. We have them on every lake in Utah. And it's the temperature, it's the stagnation of the water. It's, there's so many different variables to that. But Lincoln Beach has one, but you can still enter the, the, the lake through that access point. There's 20, 26 access points throughout the lake. And if one section has an algae bloom, it does not affect the rest of the lake in using it. And it does not affect access. So people can access, they just don't want you to swim in it at that particular moment. It could be gone in a couple of days. We had a rainstorm today which could have disseminated it. And then it would be safe again. So we, we will be, we, you saw that that was sent out through our Everbridge notification system. And if you are signed up for the county things. Otherwise, the lake, there's some great things that are happening around the lake. There's a lot of the cities who have a beachfront property have been doing additional work there. Vineyard especially has been doing some work. If you ever get over to Vineyard, you might want to go over, check out their beach and some of the other things that are going on there. They're still working on the trail system that will eventually go all the way around, 70 miles of trail that will go around the lake. Spanish Fork has part of their trail system over there. Provo has theirs as well as Saratoga Springs. A lot of this on this side, the east side of the lake is connected now. There's a huge project being done that's called Wakera Way. It's out there towards Orem and, and it's on the old Holdaway property, if any of you are familiar. Wayne Holdaway used to live in our city. And the Holdaway's owned, I don't know, thousands and thousands of acres there next to the lake. And so in a conservation effort, they have teamed up with the state and, and the Lake Commission. And they are putting in a conservation area right there with some trail systems, some walkways, some, some ways that they can benefit, that can benefit this, the, the residents who want to use that system. So they're doing some tours every once in a while. And you can look that up on, on their Facebook page of Wakera Way. And, and you can go out there and, and take a look at what they're doing. Some of it is roped off for some grazing. And then there are others that are, other parts that are walkways. There's going to be an educational center. So most of our kids in our district will probably be going there for some, some field trips, et cetera. So there's lots of really great things happening around the lake. During the legislative session, they were, they were really trying to figure out how to put state money in overall, if it's going to be a state entity or just our local entities putting money in. But that did not go through the full legislative process. So at this point, we are still part of that commission. Are there any questions about the lake? Enjoy it. Oh, one thing that I forgot to mention in case any of our residents want to know, I put it on our social media. But as you know, the wind can come up very quickly in the lake. And people are out on their paddle boards, et cetera. And our search and rescue have had some really rough times with people who have, have died drowned on the lake because of lack of jackets. And so there is a campaign currently going to have life jacket stations that you can borrow them at all of those access points. And so they're asking anyone who's going to buy new ones or if you still have some that are of good use or if you would like to donate money to that cause. The Lake Commission is accepting those and they want to have those life jacket. It's not, it's just a, not even a rental. You can just go and at that access point, use it for the day and then put it back up for someone else to use it the next day. So we have put that on our social media.
It'll be similar to the scooters in Provo.
Yeah, yeah, except for you don't have to pay for it. You just can use them.
Yeah, well, scooters in Provo.
You use them. You have to put your credit card in, the ones in the Provo, to be able to use them. But yeah, this is, it's a great service. And the sheriff's department is very excited that this will be, because a lot of people go fishing or on their, on their paddleboard and they don't think, oh, it's not that deep. I'm just going to be here. But the wind kicks up and it's really, really a sad situation, so.
Great. Okay, Bob?
911, nothing happened there. They've canceled stuff. They've had some, some family deaths and that type of thing. And so they've canceled meetings. Solid Waste, lots going on there. Nothing to do with rate increases or anything like that. But the new transfer station is coming along rather quickly. There's a large development going in. It's an industrial development going in out beyond the, the airport. And so those roads are all being built now. And they're anticipating them to be done this fall. The Solid Waste Transfer Station is probably about 75% complete design-wise. And so they'll be ready to start construction next year. They've sold the land where the current transfer station is. And there is going to be a very interesting development that Springville's approving, looks like, of a town center multi-use there that will be, I think, very interesting. Something that, that we may want to look at and learn from where you have ground floor incubator of, of small businesses with residents up above. And so it may be something that would be valuable for us to at least study. That's it.
Thank you. All right, SESD, mostly right now, they are, biggest thing they're considering is the resources we have for electricity. Because our coal that we've been using, we, that contract ends next year. There are another contract that ends next year. And so we're looking at ways to supplement the power that we're getting right now and how much we want to have in regular contracts and how much we still want to just go out to the open market and buy when we need it. So, and they're talking a little bit about, well, seriously, about investing in some solar power as SESD as opposed to just residential too. So I'm looking at that. And there's a nuclear power project that we're part of. So we're still keeping our eye on that one. So, and it's being heavily supported and subsidized by the federal government also. So, but other than that, there's not really much to report there.
I have one thing that I didn't talk about. I've been going back and forth with Chris. He's, you know, doesn't have really great service. But the ARPA money, which is this, this new set of government money that's coming out, it was given directly from the US Treasury to all the larger cities. But the smaller entities, it goes to the state and then we have to request the funding. And so it's called ARPA, American Rescue Plan, whatever the A stands for, ACT, yes. And so that money was given to the state. And we, starting on June 21st, our city had an obligation to, and they were, we were given 30, we're given 30 days till, till July 21st, which is next week, to request those funds. We will get about $177,000 roughly. But we have not yet requested those funds. If it is not requested by that due date, then we relinquish those and other people, entities will get that. It is important that we do this. There's a certain form that has to be gone out. And the document has to be signed by an authorized representative with legal authority to bind the, the, our, us, which would either be the mayor or Chris, because he is the person documented as our, as our financial director. The reason this is important, not only is it $177,000 that we have already talked about using towards our water line project because it can go for water or sewer infrastructure. If we use it for that purpose, we can then also request a grant. And the state will match that towards our project. And we can do it towards our water line project that we are currently doing. And so we would get, when we request this $177,000, we will get half of it this year and half of it next year. They haven't determined yet if the grant will be the same, if we will get half this year and half next year, or if they will just give us the full match this year. But those are, I think it's very important. Chris, as I've been talking back and forth with him, he is out of town at Lake Powell and is not able to sign these documents or access them. So I'm requesting Mayor, if you and, and maybe Jody together can get those figured out and signed and put in before the 21st. So that then we can go forward with the opportunity to get this matching grant for the water line.
So this is only, it's either water or sewer?
Well, you could use it for other COVID expenses too. But if we want to do the match, it has to be for one of those things.
Match-only support?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And so I have told the state, the governor's office of planning and budget, that yes, we want the match, but we do need to get those paper, that paperwork in.
Is there a bunch of planning that we have to do as part of submitting that? Or just at high level?
Well, Ted will work with us on getting all the necessary paperwork. He's, we've already been talking.
We have until like two or three years to spend the money in.
Yes.
Give all the, we just have to tell them now, yes, we want it.
We have until.
I just thought we might have to justify what we're going to spend it on.
You do. There's some paperwork that you have to, that you have to put in that says what you're spending it on. And we have to show all those numbers, which of course Ted has because we've been doing. has, because we've been doing this waterline. He's also going to be doing it with other municipalities, smaller municipalities, um, 'cause there is, just like we had with our CARES money, we have to show where it's going and how it's going, et cetera, with the, with, even with the first allocation, not just the grant. And the, the league has hired, um, someone who will help us through all the paperwork, 'cause there's a ton of paperwork, even with the first, uh, one seventy-seven. Um, and so they will be, they will help us, um, so that we don't have to hire our own person to go through all that paperwork. Um, they will help us. So I just wanna make sure that we get that in. The, the funds don't need to be spent until 2026, but they can go towards the projects we are currently on. It could pay for, through our bond, or whatever we wanna do to use it, which I think would, would, um, our citizens would greatly appreciate. Yeah. Anything with regards to our water, we can use it for, and, but we just need to ask for it, and then do the paperwork, and then when we get ready to, to do the grant, we can, we can put it for anything with regards to our water. Yes, thanks. I just wanted you not to miss the deadline. I didn't, I wasn't sure until I was texting with Chris on if he had already requested it, and he said, no, he had not.
So I have a text from, uh, an email from the league describing what we need to do.
Yeah, there's a link on that.
Chris was under the impression that he'd asked you and Marcy to be working on this, so we'll get this taken care of. All right. Yes. Yes. Yeah, actually, I've got that to talk about, like, right now, for, for a few minutes. So I've, I've got a little list of things. Um, number one, I was gonna talk about the ARPA stuff, so Gary did that. Um, I ran into Mike McKell the other day and talked to him a little bit. Um, I think, oh, Rich was being hit with a lawsuit from a fireworks company about their, um, ban on fireworks, and he was worried that we were catching that too, and I told him, yeah, I hadn't heard anything. And he just said, he was furious. He said, I'm going to the mat on that one. So I just wanted to let you know that that may be going on. Um, so just a heads up. Um, also that, though, I spoke to him about, um, that we're a little bit frustrated that we keep getting a lot, the state keeps sending us a lot of mandates and unfunded mandates and getting all up in cities' businesses. And I said, you know, I think, uh, the best government is the closest government to the people. And we don't want the federal government all up in the state's business, and we don't want the state all up, you know, why are we getting all these rules on who can inspect your homes, and, you know, that owner builders can hire their own inspectors, and, you know, and so he, anyway, we, we had a good discussion about that. So hopefully, we'll be able to, um, put some pressure on our legislature to do their state job, which they have plenty to do, and stay out of the local government's jobs. Um, we need to schedule, well, we, we've tentatively scheduled, but I wanna make sure everybody knows, a town hall meeting in September, and it will be on the, oh my gosh, now I'm having a brain cramp. Um, September, the second Tuesday, September thirteenth. So.
The thirteenth is our city, is our city council, oh, no. Let me see, September fourteenth is our city council.
Okay, so that's when we plan to have our, traditionally, we have been having our town hall meeting on the city council meeting night immediately following the Hill's day. So that's the plan, is to hold it on September fourteenth.
Okay, so what time?
Pardon, that will, uh, do you guys have any input? My, my inclination would be seven, but we could do it at six.
I think so.
Okay.
So will we have our meeting then prior?
So, well, what we have done before is either we have not held a meeting, or we've held a brief meeting at six. So let's, let's schedule the town hall meeting for seven, and then we can do what we need to do for city business. Um, but also, we should probably schedule and meet the candidates night, because we've got this election coming up. Um, the filing deadlines are in August. Can't remember off the top of my head when. So we, so we'll need to be after that, um, since we're doing a town hall, the election, the ballots are mailed out when, Jody, when we are running.
So.
Wait, so, so the ballots are being mailed out mid-October, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
What date did you say the filing dates are?
In August, January, ten through seventeen. Okay.
So, yeah, so my suggestion would be that we do meet the candidates in the first half of October. And we could do that, I would think, not in conjunction with the council meeting, because it does, it's not really necessarily any business that we need to be involved in.
Right.
It's just the people that are running, so, we, as a council. So, um, what about October fifth, Jody? Do, do you know of other city committee meetings or anything that are scheduled regularly on the first Tuesday?
And so the seventh?
So October seventh.
And what time, seven?
Um, you know what? Let's leave the time tentative right now, because, let's see how many candidates we have.
Okay. Well, I'll just put it at seven, and then we can go from there.
Does that sound good to everybody? Did you meet the candidates on October seventh at seven? Okay. All right. Okay. Um, yes, and now we've had some issues at our, on our bulletin board down at mailboxes, where we've had some, a letter that's been posted out, that's specifically mentioned the Fugis, a well-tannen board, and it's been taken down, and whoever's posting it's reposting it. It's taken down, it's been reposted. Um, we have really not policed that board in the past, because it's a, I think we viewed it as a community board, and it's not really our board. We have a board that's over last in. Um, at this, I have before personally taken things down, and I felt like they were, I've seen things up there that I thought were rude, or, you know, just negative, and I've taken it down more as a citizen that doesn't want that sort of thing on my community board. But it hasn't been an official city stance, but we're, um, making judgments or censoring those sorts of things. However, I don't really mind having negativity and personal things down there. Um, we are, Tannen is demanding that we put everything behind glass and require people to get a city stamp to post things, but I just think a child that wants to say, I want a dog to sit here, dog, here's my phone number, shouldn't have to go through all that rigmarole. So I'm proposing, this is my proposal.
It's the choir concert.
Pardon?
Or if it's a choir concert.
Yeah, right. So my proposal is that we post a sign on the bulletin board that says, just a minute, this is kind of my draft, but this is certainly wrong, but it could be reworded, but just say, this is the Woodland Hills Community Information Board. Opinions and information posted hereon are not monitored for accuracy by city officials and do not represent official city positions. Please avoid personal attacks and strive to be positive in your messages posted here. Let us all use this venue to make our city a better place.
Put it up immediately. Sounds good.
One thing, um, because we have, we have more than one entity that have, um, opportunities for public comment. So we have our regular meetings that we ask for public comment on all of our meetings. We have our social media pages, which, um, with our community news page, mostly. We have, um, that bulletin board, and we also have citizens who, who blanketly mail out those type of letters to all citizens. And so in those communications, we have not, um, censored. I think you were right, Wendy, on that. I did, uh, send that letter, as well as some of the other things that we have received in the past, in the mail, as well as some of the posts on social media, that we have not censored. I sent that to a municipal attorney today and asked, um, the question on if it is hate speech or if it is considered endangerment or anything. And although it is very, although it is very, um, hurtful to, to whoever, when it's negative like that, it is considered, um, political free speech, and that as a city, um, we do not have the opportunity to, to take it down. We can ask other people to take it down, but, um, unless we have specific rules in place prior, which we have not had, again, on any of those other entities. We let people speak freely. If they come to our public hearing, we do not stop them, whether it's correct information or not. We have not been, um, censoring at all on social media, and this last, we also had a post recently on social media, and I have probably had close to twenty people who have, um, who have sent me messages, or who have reported it to Facebook, that, um, again, some personal attacks on the other side. So those are people, other citizens who are being attacked for their political views or some other incidents. So we're finding that it's not just an issue with the Fugis. It's an issue with residents who feel, um, comfortable bashing each other, um, with, in any public forum at this point. You know, whether it's the letters that are mailed, whether it's the mailbox, whether it's social media. And so I think we need to be careful on this slippery slope of where are we censoring and where are we not? Do we, do we believe in the, in, in, in that First Amendment? Do we try to, um, encourage everyone? I would like to put a statement on our social media that says, um, very similar to what, what Wendy just said, and, um, but if we continue to get enough complaints, especially those who have now contacted Facebook and said, this is not, um, and, and this is a violation, uh, that could, um, affect, you know, adversely affect our, our city's community news page as well. So we hope that our citizens will take note of this, um, statement, and will be kinder to each other.
And I think it would be safe to post what you just read to us. That seems to me like it's not censorship, it's just saying, hey, come on, come on. Yeah, yeah.
Yep. I just sent the, that verbiage to each of you, so you can review it, and if you're comfortable with it, I'll give it, get it to Jody also, and we can post it.
Yes, I will post it on social media.
It gets positive, I think I, I like it.
You can put it on our website, we can put it at the bulletin board.
And that's what we want. We want a positive.
We do, yeah.
We, you know what? I mean, nine point nine percent of people up here are positive.
Yes.
You know, it just takes, it just takes a couple of people, either who are in a bad place in their life, or having a bad day, or just really frustrated and don't know where else to go, um, to, you know, be problematic for the rest of us. But for the most part, we're very positive, and we want it, we want to keep it that way, so.
Just maybe one comment on that. I do know, on the free speech issue, there is a difference between a public figure and private figure. And a public figure, a lot less protection. It's a lot more protection on the free speech side. Private, a lot less protection on the free speech side. A lot more protection for the individual. So I, I, I think it's a really good way to put it. It's staying out of that whole arena, just saying.
Yep.
We, we could at some point have something so egregious, we wouldn't have to make it count. I, we have to face that.
If it's really truly a hate crime, which is different than just saying, I don't like you. You know, a hate crime, it has some specific legal standards to it that then, you know, the city would have some obligation.
And I don't think, I don't see that the city has viability. I'd say that there is slander. There could be slander in these, in these discussions. I don't think we have a, um, responsibility to police. And that's reported to decide. They decided that slander should not. Whoever it is, that's up to them to find out who's posting it, et cetera. So I think we're okay.
Okay. So, so what, um, question that was asked of me is that, um, what do we do if somebody posts pornography up there?
You just take it down.
That's not like.
That's no question.
That's illegal.
That's, and that's not even in the same ballpark.
I'm just saying it because it was asked.
Yeah.
Right, and we're answering.
It's, it's allowed, it's.
It's considered a free speech, but it hasn't been yet, so.
That's right.
If it's on the internet.
And the security camera has a problem.
But on the city bulletin board down there, it's in public.
Yeah, I take it.
And you can't just post, you can't just go and pornography.
I think most of our citizens take it down, I think.
We have, we have state, we have some state statute against that. So, um, as, as pornography is considered a public health issue, and that passed our state legislature.
That's true.
And so it's different, uh, internet access is different than public, I mean, even though it's considered a protected, free, uh, First Amendment right to have pornography on the internet, there's also some regulations of that you have to be eighteen, but the rest of it, in terms of, um, public places, is illegal in the state of Utah.
Okay, so, that's the discussion. If you guys are comfortable, we'll get that up right away.
Thank you for, thank you.
And you want us to circle around and talk about this again?
I don't.
If you do let me know.
That's all I, yeah, that's all I need.
If you do let me know, we can do it at a future meeting if we need to.
I was gonna comment, as a citizen, that we all police each other anyway. If we see stuff like that, we kind of try to shut it down. We tell people to stop, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes, and we appreciate that. That's the kind of city we want to live in. I guess I should look at you this way, 'cause you can't see me when I look at you.
Yeah.
We look to order it as a back.
We have to look at your picture.
All right. Um, anything else that we need to do before we start our formal meeting?
Thanks.
All right, it is about nine twelve. I'll give you till nine twenty, I guess, and then we'll convene our formal public meeting.
Five P.M. And we, um, excuse Councilmember David Pratt, who's out of town tonight, but the other, um, council members are all in attendance, and I am Mayor, ma- Mayor Wendy Prey. Um, I would like to ask Paul MacArthur if he'd be willing to lead us in the pledge, and Carrie Malkovich if she'd be willing to offer an invocation.
Sure. Okay. Well, Ken, please, please lead us with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we are grateful for this day and for the opportunity we have to serve our citizens. Please bless us as we go throughout our city business, that we can be mindful of the needs of the residents of Woodland Hills. We're thankful for the moisture that we receive today, and we hope that that can continue. We are grateful for the protections, fire protections that we have experienced so far this year, and also pray for, for continued protection throughout this wildfire, wildfire season. We are grateful for the beauty of our community, and for the residents who are mindful of each other and, and helping our community to be a, a better place. Again, we are grateful for our, our blessings, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. All right, thank you, Paul and Carrie. Um, Jody, do you have anybody that asked to make public comment?
No.
Okay. Um, then moving on, uh, the consent agenda, and Jody says that we didn't meet that night, so, so I think we can totally approve those minutes?
Wow.
All right. Business and discussion. The first item is the resolution amending the city consolidated fee schedule.
Make the motion, will you approve that resolution?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion for MacArthur and a second from Malkovich. Any other discussion or questions about that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes and carries unanimously. Um, now, item number two on our agenda is the approval to place an antenna on the city building, and we agreed that we would table that until our next meeting on August tenth. Um, Corbett is gonna gather some more information about, um, some details and some other options, perhaps, before we, um, grant that approval. Um, the third item on the agenda is ordinance amending, amending. The third item on the agenda is ordinance amending, amending city title code 5-4-2 parentheses D1, fire sprinkler systems.
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion from Malkovich.
If you want me to.
And a second from Kinnison. Any other questions or discussion on that? Change. Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes and carries unanimously also. Those are the only things on our agenda. Is there anything else that somebody would, needs to discuss or request before we...
I would like to have a short, what do we call that?
Executive session.
Executive session. For discussing legal issues.
Potential litigation?
Yeah, potential litigation. I can't remember the wording.
Okay. All right. So Carrie's requesting a, moving that we move into executive session.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Malkovich and a second from Ottley. All in favor, MacArthur?
Yes.
Kinnison?
Yes.
Ottley?
Yes.
Malkovich?
Yes.
All right, we will move into executive session. I would anticipate that we don't have anything else on our agenda. No action will be taken when we come back into, into our general session after the executive session. If there's someone in attendance on Zoom that wants to be included after the executive session, we don't anticipate anything will happen, but we don't want to leave you out. We will make sure we get you back on the phone. Otherwise, thanks for hanging out with us this long. Let Jody know if you want to be included again when we come back, when we reconvene.
Do we turn our mic side?